Good morning and welcome to the Washington State University Board of Regents June Board Meeting. My name is Lisa Keho Kaloli Shower and I am the Chair of the Board. We are pleased to be in community virtually today and we have multiple agenda items. For those that are watching on YouTube, thank you for paying attention, for being present, and we look forward to really a meeting where we will cover a lot of critical and important topics. And the Board has spent the last year, year and a half really preparing for today's meeting. So with that, I'd like to begin by calling the meeting to order. We each meeting recognize that we are acknowledging the WSU locations statewide that are on the homelands of Native peoples who have lived in this region from time immemorial. And the university expresses its deepest respect for and gratitude toward these original and current caretakers of the region. I wanted to add that when we do land acknowledgements, it is from a place of authenticity and it is to express our respect. I had the opportunity to attend a portion of the WSU Advisory Council meeting and sat next to a member of the Cowlets Council Tribe. And it is important as we begin our meetings to remember our history. And so I just want to acknowledge that WSU has led in many ways with our Office of Tribal Relations, our recognition and respect for our Indigenous people. With that, I'd like for our Board Assistant to please go ahead and take roll call. Tracy Jordan. When I say your name, please say here. Present. Lisa Shower.
Present.
Jen Ramos.
Here.
Marty Dickinson.
Present.
Brett Langenship is in the process of joining the meeting. Enrique Serna.
Here.
Sam Hunt. Doug Pika.
Here.
Laura Powell.
Here.
Judy McDonald.
Here.
Cassandra Vogel is not participating today. Howard Wright.
Present.
And President Cantwell is here.
Present.
Have a quorum. Thank you, Tracy. We have intentionally moved to the public comment period, not to the end of the meetings this year, but we have moved them to the beginning of the meetings so that we have the opportunity to address and to listen to our WSU community. Today, we have not received any requests and so we will go ahead and move forward with our meeting. I will just add that if you are interested in addressing the Board, there are multiple ways that you can do that. You can submit a public comment online by submitting that with regents.wsu.edu or you can email the Regents at regents@wsu.edu or you can reach out to our Board Assistant Tracy. We do receive a lot of correspondence and input and thoughts and we appreciate it. We read everything that comes in through that email box. And so for those that would like to address the Board, there are multiple ways to do so. All right, moving forward, I'd like to go ahead and begin with our information items. I will just add that I mentioned that I attended with Regent Ramos, Regent Serna, and Regent Pika, the WSU System Advisory Council meeting that was held in Everett over the last couple of days, and it was a really, really great meeting. I missed a portion of it that I was excited about, that President Cantwell facilitated a conversation around our strategic pillars and sought the input of our industry partners that participate on those advisory councils. The advisory councils across the system are just an important component of the way in which we're partnering with industry and business and community and listening to what our community members are needing and how they can partner in a really effective way with WSU. I had brought with me, and Leslie and I've had this conversation, our Board Packet. And so I'm just going to show this because the Board Packet isn't a small packet. It never is. And this is the level of, I think, diligence and thoughtfulness that this Board brings to each of our Board meetings and the materials that are necessary for us to prepare. So some of us are not as old school as I am where I need to print it and highlight, and they're able to do this all online. But we do have a significant number of information and action items. And so I just share that those that are watching, this is the culmination of a lot of work, a lot of committee meetings. And so when there is the opportunity for us to move a little quicker through some of these items, we are going to go ahead and do that. There are other items that we will want to engage in a conversation. But like I said, this is really a lot of work that has led to today's meeting. The two information items that are being presented today, the first is an update on the state and federal impacts on the fiscal year 2026 budget, which is presented by Executive Vice President for Finance and Administration and Chief Financial Officer Leslie Brunelli, Vice President for External Affairs and Government Relations Glenda Becker Fenter, and Vice President for Research Kim Christian. So with that, why don't I go ahead and pass the time over to Glenda to get us started? Or Leslie?
Yep, Glenda, please go ahead.
That's great, Regent Shower, thank you so much. And Kyle, thank you for putting up the slide. We can go right ahead into the second slide, Kyle. Just for everybody, my name is Glenda Becker Fenter. I'm the Vice President for External Affairs and Government Relations and we work on behalf of the university focused on state, federal, and regional and health sciences policy. Today, I'm going to give a quick overview about what happened in Olympia and kind of the impacts of that and then what we are looking for, what we're going to be watching over the next few months. And then the same kind of overview for Washington DC, which will set the stage for my colleague, Vice President of Research Kim Christian, to talk about the direct impacts on our research portfolio at WSU. And we all know it was a challenging year in Olympia for everybody. There are impacts and cuts to higher education, K through 12, social services, industry. We're still facing around a $16 billion revenue shortfall over four years. We had an impact cut of 1.5% across the board to all higher education. The one silver lining in that cut was that it was not prescribed. It was broad so that the institution is able to address those cuts in a strategic manner. The, we're looking at about $4 billion in revenue increases or tax increases over the next two, next four years. The Governor also did in his budget veto about 55 specific items. It saved about $20, $25 million from the operating budget. There were things around contracts to serving foster youth, college students, immigrants, and seniors, spending for studies and work groups were cut. None of WSU's projects in the operating budget were received veto, vetoed by the Governor. We can go to the next slide, Kyle. Direct impacts for WSU here are attached. The operating budget was actually a dollar amount of just under $10 million to WSU's direct appropriations. Our cost of living adjustments were partially funded and the fund split was changed. So we are going to be ending up paying more for that, which actually impacts the cut that we received from the state as well. Two kind of, I don't want to say mandatory, but required things that were funded, academic student-employee contracts and our accreditation at the College of Medicine were not funded. And so again, those are going to have budget impacts at WSU because we're going to have requirements to move forward on those. We had a couple of specific programs that were not funded at WSU, including we're not, were reduced in funding at WSU. The Turf Grass Research Program, we had a cut to the Ruckles House Center and a cut to the Merone News Fellowship. Again, a silver lining in this is that our COOGs, our Native COOG Scholarship Fund was funded for an additional two years. We can go to the next slide, Kyle. On the capital side of things, we actually had a fairly good year on the capital projects, minor capital preservation, $25 million for demolition of Hild Hall, improvements to the Winanshee Plant Growth Facility and the Chiller Upgrade on WSU Vancouver's campus and the Waddle Facility. One of the bigger disappointments that we had this year was that there was no funding included in the package for WSU's new building for the Team Health Project in Spokane. I do want to talk, talk about this a little bit because the, because the building, the new building was not built does not mean that the program is not moving forward. And so working in tandem with Executive Vice President Brunelli and Executive Vice President DeWald, we are looking at how we move forward with that program using facilities and space that we already have and maximizing that, that kind of opportunity so that we can still provide the team health type of service, but not with a new facility. We can go to the next.
And then, DeWald, we are looking at how we move forward with that program using facilities and space that we already have and maximizing that, that kind of opportunity so that we can still provide the team health type of service, but not with a new facility.
Are you all hearing me being repeated?
Yes.
I don't know why it's doing that. That's very strange. All right, hopefully that will not happen again. We had two direct outcomes that came to WSU. One was a study on large animal vet that was put in a proviso. And the other was one that we worked with Snohomish County on to help support our sustainable aviation field work, both in Payne Field and in tri-cities. So that is, that $1.2 million will help support staff and equipment to help part our partnership with Snohomish County. We can go to the next slide. So things that we're going to be looking at next as we go into the interim right now is, and I think we'll talk a little bit more about this in a minute, but what are the impacts of federal policies going to be on state budgets? Because there will be impacts on federal policy, on the state budget from the decisions that are being made in Washington DC. The next revenue forecast is scheduled for June 27th. When we met with Governor Ferguson yesterday, he mentioned that that's something they're watching as well because that will give us an idea of what we're, what our financial situation is that we're dealing with going into the next year. I put stakeholder reaction on here because it's not just our WSU stakeholders, but looking at the corporate and industry and association reaction around the state and how they react to the implementation of the President's budget. And then the Governor has still said he's, he's going to be reviewing how the taxes to our, our industry partners around the state are being implemented to understand what that impact is. And actually, in tandem with the revenue forecast, I think the real question will be, depending on what that revenue forecast is, will there be a special session that's called? And I think that's still an option that could come later on in the year, should the revenue forecast be problematic? Or should there be challenges with what, what is moving forward with implementation of some of the tax provisions? We can go to the next slide. So we'll move quickly to the federal, federal side. President Trump sent his budget request to Congress last week. This is the start of the appropriations process. The President's budget is his request for funding and we're already seeing some of the things that he has put in there. The House committees are not abiding by. There is no obligation for the Congress to actually implement what he puts in the budget. It's a guiding principle. So we've been working on some ag things, for example, where we thought programs were going to be cut and they have not been cut by Congress at this point. So Congress is going to be looking at asserting their role as the budget writers. He also did send a rescissions package, which is pulling back money based on some of the DOGE recommendations that came in. It's about $9.9 billion, I believe. Included in that was funding to rescind things around NPR, PBS, and USAID. So again, the Congress needs to do, needs to make the decision on that. House has already started working on their appropriations bills for this year and the Senate is in the process of working on the big beautiful bill that was sent up to the Congress by President Trump. We're going to talk a little bit about that, so let's go to the next slide, Kyle. So the, the, the big budget reconciliation package with, or the big beautiful bill as it's being called in Washington DC will have some direct impacts on Washington State University. The bill itself included almost $5 trillion in tax cuts and 1.7 trillion in spending cuts. The cost to the bill, according to CBO that was released this, this past week, was a little over $2.4 trillion. Direct impacts to WSU at this point that we're, that we are watching and working on very closely are impacts to our students. That's the most important thing that we are focused on right now. There are changes to Pell Grant programs. There are changes to the Grad Plus loans. They are changing how, they're making recommendations on how part-time students can be eligible for, for Pell Grants. They are eliminating subsidized, the House proposed, and I should say, when I say they, I mean the House. The House is proposing eliminating subsidized loans and capping graduate loans, which would have an impact on our, on our, on our medical school in particular. On other additional WSU programs that we're monitoring, there's discussion around elimination of SNAP education and turning SNAP back completely to the state, which would have an impact on state funding. It also creates what is being called as a risk sharing package, which is an interesting proposal that's been around for a while, but one that will not be, that will be challenging for, for a lot of public institution in particular, because they create incentives and encourage institutions to limit the acceptance of low and moderate income students and put the onus back on the institution to make sure that they are having what they call skin in the game in order to help pay for that. So it takes away the risk from the federal government and puts it back initially onto the specific institution. One, one silver lining in the big beautiful bill is that this is something that WSU's Government Relations Office has been working on for about seven years, but the Research Facilities Act has received mandatory funding in that package for $1.25 billion through USDA to help fund infrastructure challenges at land-grant institutions and public institutions around this, around the country. So that, that is one silver lining in here that we've been working on. We can go to the next, next slide, but I will, just before we, before we do that, let's go back real quick, Kyle, sorry. I, I've said this a couple of times, but federal times this morning, but federal policies will definitely impact the, the ability of our state to make investments. And so I want to highlight in particular what's going on with Medicaid. So let's go to the next, next slide. Over 200,000 Washington residents could end up losing access to Medicaid should the House Medicaid provisions go forward. And what that means then is that the state will have to make a decision on how they cover those individuals. We could lose over $2 billion in federal Medicaid funding over the next four years and that could not only impact individuals, but rural hospitals and nursing homes. And, and it could have a detrimental effect on here. We're still on our state. We're still seeing from the Senate that they're, they're not convinced that the House package was the way to go. Let's go to the next slide, Kyle. But it is, it is, it could have extreme impacts on a lot of things that the state of Washington is doing to help support a lot of different policies around and a lot of interests around the state. And so we, I wanted to make sure we highlighted this because they will have a lot of real impacts on how we advocate and we engage with the state and the decisions that you all as Regents need to make today going forward. We can go to the next slide. On the federal side as well, we are however, still moving forward with our FY26 appropriations requests that are strategically aligned with some of the priorities we have across the, across the system. So we will continue to advocate for our students, our research, and our faculty in Washington DC. The process has started for the community project funding in the, what we call earmark requests in the Senate. And things have been listed. We have had a historic request put in by Senator Murray to support some of the work we're doing around AI, infrastructure, and aquaculture. This is the first step of many. And so, you know, we had great earmark requests that went in during the last Congress and they didn't go through because Congress didn't, wasn't able to reach a deal. So we're trying to be very temperate and cautious about this process. But our team, including my colleague Kim and Jake Dowd and Bethany Johns, have been working very hard with the College of Vet Med, the College Connors, and the College of Arts and Sciences to pull together a system-wide project to support our work in AI and in, in applied AI and in research around aquaculture. I, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions or discuss on this, but other than that, I'll, I'll toss it over to Kim Christian so she can talk about impacts.
Thanks, Glenda. I think Kyle is going to put the slides up. Thanks, Kyle. You can go to the next slide. Great. I'm not going to spend too much time on this. I just wanted to orient us once again to see where we are as we're inching closer to the end of the fiscal year. Our award balance continues to go up. Our awards coming in to continue to go up. I'll talk a little bit more later in the slide presentation about some exact numbers. So Kyle, you can go to the next slide. The biggest thing, as you all likely recall, in February NIH issued a directive to attempt to cap all indirect cost rates at 15% for, for past and future grants. And of course, this moved away from the established way that universities have always worked. And so that, as you know, went quickly into the courts. When I last presented to you in April, the Department of Energy had also announced a 15% cap rate policy. Since then, we've seen announcements from the National Science Foundation and the Department of Defense. The first three are in the courts pending. NSF has delayed their policy until June 13th. So we're waiting to see on that. DOD has only announced a plan to implement their policy, so it's not in place yet. But again, all of these are what we're tracking because of those indirect cost rates and the FNA that we get as revenue are key to many parts of our research enterprise. So we have been looking at, now that we have some more, we're closer to the end of FY25, some specific numbers and projections on that. So Kyle, if you can go to the next slide. Right. So this is a little bit different than what you've seen before because now, as I said, we can look pretty closely at FY25. So if we would have had the 15% across the board cut in FY24, that would have been a loss of $19 million. With our FY25 numbers, what we're looking at would have been closer to $24 million. And we're looking at specific drops based on our top funding agencies here too. So you can see, most notably, HHS and USDA, which account for about 60% of our research funding. So these estimates give us a sense of the scale of the losses to WSU if this indirect cost rate were capped at 15%. We're, we're obviously following the legal cases, but we're also engaging with our national organizations in DC as they, they're seeking to create alternative models for indirect cost rates that would be more transparent and more defensible, easier, easier for Congress and others to understand. So that is moving forward. And since April, we've also seen other ongoing and new disruptions. Kyle, you can go to the next slide. Most notably, the drawdown disruption to 14 of our USDA NIFA grants. Again, the regular cycle for grants is we get awarded and then we, that's a contract and then we do the work, we draw down through an invoice system and then we, those become research expenditures and FNA revenue. We started to see this drawdown disruption in April as I first talked to you about it and it's been going on since then. We had seven of 14 impacted grants that are no longer suspended. A day and a half, I think it was two days ago, our, our largest one, our ag AI funding was unsuspended and so we were able to draw down on that. So right now, we're sitting at eight awards that remain in this limbo state of being suspended with a balance of a little over $9 million. That includes a very large Soil to Society project that we also have going. So we don't have a reason for this, but we're working very closely with Glenda's team and with Jake Dowd in DC to continue to work with our congressional delegation and NIFA to get these awards out of this suspended sort of state. And then the next thing that we've seen quite a bit of, Kyle, you can go to the next slide. From DOGE, we have defend the spend request. So this happens in that same drawdown portal that I was just talking about. So at the time of invoice, after the work has been completed, we're starting to get requests for just additional justifications on the draws of those federal awards. We've had 450 of those since April. Many of those are duplicate requests, however. While the vast majority of them, the detail is fairly general and we're able to put through and we, and it comes back down, there are a handful of very, really particular line item justification requests that we are seeing. And this is consistent with our peers, with universities across the system, or sorry, across the nation. In addition to this sort of DOGE, defend the spend, now we've seen that the, the biggest portal and the one that's used by NIFA and a lot of other federal agencies has actually now put this justification requirement into all of their invoicing requests. So this is just putting a lot more burden on our sponsored projects, folks, who are the ones doing this drawdown. But the good news is we are continuing to be paid on these draws even as we're having to justify that spending more and more. So I'll give you an update now on what our numbers look like. Kyle, if you want to go to the next slide. Right now, we now have 15 awards with a total balance of about $10.6 million that are under this stop work, official stop work orders or are frozen or having these drawdown issues. We still have outstanding receivables, however, we are, we are collecting on those so that money is slowly trickling in. We've also seen since January, 12 awards have had their stop work orders rescinded and they've been able to resume work in addition to the seven NIFA grants that have now also been able to, we've been able to draw down and they're resuming work. You can go to the next slide, Kyle. We have 28 awards now that have been fully terminated and we have one partial termination. 18 of these have happened since I talked to you in April, including the 10 NSF awards that came as part of a really large sweep. NSF did a really big sort of wave of terminations over a series of weeks for universities across the country. Our total loss is still sitting at about $5.5 million. That's money that we will not be able to collect on. We haven't done the work. That was just grants that have been terminated. We've also had three awards, however, whose terminations have been rescinded while their court cases are moving through the legal system. So those ones are a little bit of limbo, but we have resumed work on those and we are able to draw down on those awards. Taken together, this again is about 2.5% of our active grants. So all of this has also changed the impact on obviously our awards coming into WSU. Kyle, you can go to the next slide. I previously reported, we know that February and March were really low. We were down 66 and then 48%. We had a slight uptick in April, but we were back down in May again. So we're, as we're looking towards the end of this fiscal year, we're still up 12%. But we, but that June is generally, if we look at the averages, June is generally a high month for us to come in on awards. So with the government now and the federal agencies not issuing a lot of awards, we, we don't assume that we will see that same uptick in June, but we are watching it. So if we look kind of at the impact of this, Kyle, if you can go to the next slide. So that previous slide, you saw the actual impacts of these policy changes on our awards to date. We're starting to do projections now that we have more data. So this slide projects how reductions in the volume of federal awards would impact WSU's external funding, our totals. So we're using that FY24 as a baseline because it's really close to where we are in FY25. It keeps us, it gives us a good baseline. We're keeping the non-federal funding constant. So you can see, even with a 10% reduction in federal funding, we result in nearly $25 million loss in total awards and again, and a loss in FNA revenue. But we're using these projections to review the federal administration's budget that Glenda just talked about as we're looking at agencies and some of the fairly dramatic cuts that are being suggested to funding agencies that are key partners to WSU. You can go to the next slide, Kyle. For example, USDA, which accounts for anywhere from 30 to 34% of our annual federal funding, proposed cuts would seriously diminish that. The largest cuts, although it looks like now that, as this has moved to Congress, that this isn't going to be the case. But in the President's suggested bill, it was zero, zeroing out capacity grants. And those are our formula funds that all land-grant institutions get. It's based on statutory formulas that really come into WSU and support our agricultural research, forestry, and extension programs. Again, as Glenda said, this is, these are, this is the request of the President's budget, but it, it hasn't come to fruition yet. But if we look at the full federal funding landscape, Kyle, if you can go to the next slide. What I want to do now is shift a little bit from projections about awards. Awards are a base. If you remember that kind of model we have, we get the award and then we do the work and makes an expenditure and then we get this FNA revenue. So So we worked alongside Matt Skinner's team to model some scenarios for the reduction, if we get this reduction in volume of federal awards, which is likely, how that would impact expenditures and FNA revenue. So you can see in these projections, we, we, these are based on actual federal dollars expended again from that FY24 baseline in red. You can see those reductions corresponding 10, 25, 50%, as well as then we kept the FNA on this slide. It's, it's, this is not with the 15%. So we can see those reductions. But then if we look at kind of combining this scenario, if you go to the next slide, Kyle. So in this slide, what we did is we projected both a drop in the volume of awards that would, that would reduce our research expenditures and a cap of that 15% indirect cost rate. So you can see in the cluster of bars on the right showing the FNA dollars, they're far fewer, obviously. So regardless of the volume reduction scenario, a 15% federal FNA cap rate would result in a 49% reduction in FNA across the board at any, at any drop. So this would be fairly significant, obviously. If we take it one step further, Kyle, if you go to the next slide. If we look at these scenarios for reduced award volumes and potential impacts on our expenditures and direct costs, you can see a decline here from about 17.7 million on 10% to over 88 million on 50%, 50%. But the key takeaway here from our analysis is really the impact on people. So when we look at this, salaries, wages and benefits make up the largest share of our direct research expenditures across all employee types, faculty, staff and students. So these projections are meant to provide us with scenarios for us to help for planning. It doesn't mean that this is going to come to fruition, but we want to make sure that if it does, we're ready with understanding what those impacts would be and then how we can stay competitive throughout, even with these. So if you can go to the final slide, Kyle. We are in fact ensuring that we're going to do whatever it takes to remain competitive over the next few years. And it's going to be more important than ever to really leverage our advantages and lean into our research strengths. Make sure that we're aligning those with the priorities of key federal funders and we started that work already. As federal funders are realigning their priorities, we're matching our research strengths to those funders as well as looking obviously outside to industry and others. I've also convened a research infrastructure committee. They're working now to assist us so that we can prioritize critical research infrastructure across the system. So we know that if we do have reduced funds coming in, where those critical key points are that we're going to continue to work on. And of course, finally, working with Glenda and her team really closely to advocate in DC for WSU's research. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Kim. Lacey, did you have anything else you wanted to, to add?
No, I think we're ready to move along to the athletics item.
Okay. Is there any, yes, sorry, Regent Ramos.
Yeah, just, can I just make a comment? Because I think I appreciate all the data. It's timely, it's accurate. But I think what we're also hearing is that you are proactively harnessing the talent across all of the WSU community, whether you're inside the institution or, you know, supporters across the nation to help you advocate and get insights so that you can proactively, not just react, but plan for scenarios and mitigate, right? So I think that level of effort, if I could just express really my gratitude to all the faculty, all the staff and everyone. That's my observation for the past, you know, at least since we've heard about all of these administrative executive orders and everything, websites have been posted and whatnot. And the data is all there. So if I could just encourage everyone to, you know, thank your WSU friends and encourage them to continue to share their voices, but then look, look at the data and help the team. I just wanted to voice that. Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah, I'll just.
Lisa, I want to underscore what Regent Ramos said because this team is doing an enormous amount of analytical work, not just on exposing the challenge and not just on raising voices to support what we have done in the past and the way it used to be, but to design entirely new ways to support our research and our capacity to serve our communities. And that is really hard and it hasn't really been something that anybody has had to do for a very, very long time. And that really is a place where all of the above in terms of thinking about how to design those capacities to keep us serving our communities with research in the future is really a place where we could use everybody's voice.
Thank you, President Cantwell and Regent Ramos. Kim, were you going to add something? And then I see Regent Powell's had a hand up too.
I was just going to say, I'll drop it in the chat box, but all of these numbers and data are on our federal updates web, research website. And we update them daily, so I'll, I'll drop that into the chat box. But, and I also want to say, yeah, we're, we are working with our partners. We were in Seattle about a week ago and met with a number of different partners to work with them as we're looking to the next steps to continue the research enterprise, you know, despite what the federal slowdown might be.
Thank you, Kim. Regent Powell, did you have any comments you might want to share or questions?
Well, just a quick question. Kim, are we looking on the indirect cost rates? Are we looking at like a, of the same cost rate for every agency or are they going to be done individually? Across the board or not?
Right, so I mean, the attempt right now seems to be a 15% across the board. However, we already, I mean, there are some agencies right now, like some USDA programs that, that only charge 8% right now, right? So we are below 15% on some already. But right now, yes, it looks like the vast majority, the attempt is to go to that 15% rate across all federal funding and then, you know, the, the largest federal funding agencies. The model that's being put forward by our national organizations and working with congressional delegations in DC is looking at a middle ground. So they are going to, they're saying, okay, so maybe those ones that are federally negotiated rates are at 76 or 78% is too much. 15% is going to be too little to really continue the nation's R and D. So where can we kind of meet in the middle and come up with a process that is a little bit easier for folks to understand how that rate gets calculated? That's one of the critiques is that this, that it's not really clear how these negotiated rates get calculated and how they're formulated out to universities.
And, and I would just quickly add, Regent Powell, that the, the other challenge we have is just educating Capitol Hill on what FNA is, what indirect costs mean to the institution, why we're negotiating these with the, with the agencies and what the impact is to the changes. Because there's very few staff, let alone elected officials who actually, I mean, this is the business of doing research. And so that is part of the education that we've been doing in DC to explain what this impact means. So.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the agility and that's what I think we're going to see continue that theme throughout this entire meeting is the ability for our leadership team and our faculty and staff to adapt and pivot. I don't believe that any of us knew what we were in for this year and the team's ability to come together and to continue to move forward, also being open and transparent to Regent Ramos' point. We have had access, we all have access to be able to see what Kim's team and what we're doing from a research perspective because of the openness and the website being updated daily. So thank you for all of the work. It does not go unnoticed. And if there's anything that we can do or those that are watching and engaged in WSU, please let us know. I'm going to move to the next item on our agenda, which includes Assistant Vice President for Business and Financial Services and Athletics, CFO John Harlow and Athletics Director Anne McCoy. They will be presenting the results from an athletics valuation study that was completed upon request by the regions. I do want to shout out to Regent Dickinson. I am incredibly grateful that you have been advocating for this study, that we have the opportunity to see the results and the results are impressive, as we anticipated they would be because of the power of our athletics teams, our student athletes and our overall approach to how we're continuing to, to, to fight for our athletics program. And so I'm excited to hear this presentation. We're joined today for this presentation by Russell Wright and Bailey Concato. I may have said that wrong. Thank you both for being here from Collegiate Consulting. And so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to John and Anne. If you'd like to go ahead and do a bit of an introduction, glad to have Russell and Bailey with us today and excited to have you present this information.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Regent Shower. I'll give us a brief intro here and then I will turn it over to our, to our colleagues, Russell and Bailey. And Bailey, feel free as we're getting rolling here to share your screen if, if, if you don't mind. In January of this year, we engaged with Collegiate Consulting to analyze the valuation of the WSU athletics brand. This firm has worked with over 600 institutional partners, including valuation studies in the last year for Rice University, University of New Mexico and the University of Toledo. Collegiate Consulting has become a leader in collegiate athletics, ranging from strategic planning, operational reviews, feasibility studies, conference membership and Title IX and gender equity studies. A project was led by Collegiate Consulting Founder and Managing Director Russell Wright and Director of Operations Bailey Concato. Russell founded the firm in 2005 as a collaborative venture with the National Association of Collegiate Directors of Athletics, the collegiate licensing company and strategic marketing affiliates. Prior to founding the firm, Russell led client acquisition, account management, local corporate advertising, e-commerce and business development for what is now known as CBS College Sports Online, a leader in collegiate athletics web solutions. Bailey Concato joined the firm in fall of '22 and has served as the lead for more than 50 projects, including benchmarking and feasibility studies, strategic planning, media valuation studies and sports sponsorship and new sports studies. And with that, I'll turn it over to Russell and Bailey.
Great, thank you, John. I'm going to have you as my hype man next time I have to travel and have you going before me. Well, good, well, good to be here with everybody. We appreciate it as John just gave you a little bit of background on us and this project. As a quick little background before we go in, we've done about eight of these in the past 10 months. As you have seen the dynamic changes that have happened in Division One and you look at, at, as schools and institutions are looking for more ways to increase revenue and increase financial support, whether from the institution, whether from the community or whether from its donors, that we have seen a huge uptick in these and truly, like I said, the past year. So our study focused on, on three items. Branding and visibility, which was focused on your, your streaming, your linear network broadcast of your athletic events and then your social media reach. And as we go into there, we'll, we'll show what that valuation is. This was a three-year study going back fiscal year '24, '23 and '22. So not this current fiscal year, since we are still ongoing. The impact to the city of Pullman for not just the game day athletic events, but any events that were in athletic facilities as well as also the summer camps and what that meant having those campers on in Pullman on campus and then what, whatever events we might have in those athletic facilities and what that economic impact is to Pullman. And then the third component is the impact, the spending impact of all of the personnel. So all of your athletic employees, full-time, part-time, whatever the case might be, your student athletes. Also included in that is the volunteerism hours that's done by your SAC that's, or actually organized by your SAC and then done by all of your student athletes. And then another component we did is just, this was more a statewide impact, looking at graduating. So again, the most recent student athlete graduates who stay within the state and then what their economic impact is, which we pulled this as, as I was telling John, this kind of came about organically from a previous study with a higher ed report that they had seen and, and we've been able to apply that to all of our other studies, but just showing statewide those student athletes who stay within the state of Washington, what their impact is. Be hit our next slide. Bailey.
There we go. Yeah, I got you. Sorry, it wasn't working for some reason, but there you go.
Here we go. So real quick, here is just the overall overview. So over the past three years, overall economic value, taking those three top line items, which again drilled down into different, so on the branding and streaming, you have athletic events. You have your streaming events, you have social media. On game day, you have all of your different athletic events. But overall, for the past three years, 2. Bailey, what's that say? Cause I just, there it is, 2.52 billion, over a million, sorry, billion. That's what happens when I stop being able to read well. Yeah, sorry, 2.5 billion over the past three years. And, and you will see obviously driven your broadcast exposure, as you could see, and as we kind of knew anecdotally going on to this, kind of the demise of the original PAC 12 with kind of what's happened with this interim period as the PAC 12 rebuilds. We knew was going to impact those broadcast numbers, both with regards to the number of broadcasts, specifically as we look at football and basketball, and then also the reach of the broadcast as, as there were different networks involved than, than what the previous PAC 12 was. But then this gives you just a very broad-based look. And then the, the subsequent sides here, we will break down some of the, the line items. And then as John knows, as John and Anne knows, the big report has the breakdown and goes more into the methodology of how all these numbers were determined and ascertained.
Yep, so just a brief overview.
I'm going to have you, yep.
Sorry, Russell, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, I was just going to say, as you know, yes, if you'll talk a little bit about the advertising value.
Absolutely. Just a brief overview of kind of our, our framework for media exposure. So we start by looking at some, at the cost per 1,000 impressions, the standard rate that advertisers pay to place content on a media platform. And from there, we calculate what that advertising cost would look like if it were applied to an entire event based on views or engagements. And then to capture the value of organic exposure, like earned media or unpaid reach, we use an advertising value equivalency multiplier that was created in the public relations space to reflect the impact of that organic exposure on different mediums.
A quick question, Bailey, this is President Cantwell. If you could weave into this discussion, the intersection of this analysis with the realities of the, the media deal-making structure that conferences have.
Yes, ma'am. Russell, I'll let you speak to that a little bit as well. Yep.
Yeah, thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Um, so what that breaks into for Washington State University Athletics for broadcast advertising and value equivalency over the past three years, that number totaled 1.51 billion, again, over the last three years in advertising value equivalency for Washington State University Athletics. Streaming totaled $340,000 in advertising value equivalency over the last three years. The radio, AVE, totaled $2.22 million over the last three years. And then that social media advertising value equivalency totaled $4,652 over the last three years. So overall total over the last three years, we're looking at an advertising value equivalency of about 1.52 billion, which if I'm using quick math, I think breaks out to close to just over 500 million over the last three years as well.
And Bailey, again, I'm going to just interject, so if you, because we're going to need to temper these numbers with reality. We need you to help us with that. We, there is no world in which 1.52 billion over three years is, is a receivable number by the institution. So this is, this is a great analysis, by the way. Thank you.
But, but, and that is accurate. This is if you were to go in there and pay for advertising, you know, as, as we show in the detail on the networks, I think under your previous PAC, you know, PAC 12 deal, as we saw, you were on ESPN, Fox Sports One. There were actually some on, on one of the big three, which I think would have been ABC back then. Based on your cost per 1,000 Based on your cost per 1,000 impressions, which we did it at conservative $35, this is what the viewership value, if Washington State said, okay, for a football game, and we use the math of a typical football game being three hours, of what the value would be if you went out there and bought that advertising as, let's say, a three-hour infomercial based on audience who viewed that game and then, of course, the the network that it's on. And so as you see the decline, as we see with kind of the interim period with what you and Oregon State has, especially with regards to the football schedule and kind of the hybrid scheduling alliance that you had with the Mount West. It looked very different because their television package is no was not as strong, as you know, as as what the previous PAC-12 had. And so it'll be very interesting moving forward. And I know that's a
It will never be the same. So every for every, it will never be that PAC-12 again. We are, and you you guys know this, I know you do, we're moving into a whole new world. So again, I think this is an incredibly important analysis, but I always want to put a pin in it for all of our observers that this is not relevant to the kind of deal-making we make as conferences. Or it's relevant, obviously. It's not the number that we could achieve in any way. I think it really tells us how valuable our assets are, though, which which is hugely important.
It it really talks, you know, how many eyeballs, you know, during that three-hour football broadcast or basketball, men's or women's, what those eyeballs and and that that branding of Washington State for that timeframe. You know, as as John and Ann and I discussed, and we've heard a couple of our schools following this, is taking kind of what that Phase Two is, is taking a look at what that web traffic might be, whether it's to the EDU site and that admissions page, whether it is going to the donor page. And how can we kind of take, because exactly to your point, Madam President, is that's not a number, you know, is you're not going to get a check for 1.5 billion, but how do we take those eyeballs and convert them? And then what does that mean?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You were very welcome.
Sorry to interrupt. I have a couple regions that have their hand up. And so I want to allow for for space here. I think this is really critical. And I just want to add, while we don't have 1.5 billion that we can deposit into the checking account, I think our opportunity here is to leverage this investment to benefit WSU, both in enrollment as well as folks showing up to athletic events and to supporting. We have student athletes who have stories that need to be told and need to be amplified. And those stories help us encourage new students to show up and want to be part of WSU. So I know we have a full presentation here and we've got Russell and Bailey. I see Brett's hand and Judy's hand. I'd like for the two of you to be able to ask your questions and provide comments, like to go through the rest of the presentation, and then we'll allow for some more opportunity for engagement. So Regent Blinkenship.
Oh, good morning.
Morning.
If you can hear me.
Yes, sir.
I had I had emergency oral surgery yesterday, so I look, I feel like I lost a boxing match. So I'm, you won't hear from me a lot today, so I I trying to put my best face, side of my face forward. But I had a, on the on the theme of better understanding, we have heard of the potential value of streaming and to not be afraid of moving forward on media deals that include streaming. But the number you presented there on streaming seems incredibly out of character with the others. Could you provide more on that?
The streaming numbers, and this is us talking, just is what we've seen in the market compared to, you know, what whether it's Amazon or Netflix will tell you. As we have seen, and this is this is primarily from the ESPN Plus numbers, the streaming numbers are much lower than we had anticipated. And I will say this, we have seen this across all eight of our studies as we ask those respective institutions to pull their streaming numbers. They have not been as robust as you would, as you would think anecdotally when you listen to to some of the pundits talk about how valuable streaming is going to be. And so it's interesting because I I wonder, is that the reach of an ESPN Plus compared to if you're on an Amazon or a Hulu or a Netflix, which is kind of TBD? And and you know, those three have not shared as much, other than when it's what I think the Thanksgiving halftime performance by Beyonce on, I believe that might have been Hulu, that talked about the number of minutes. But it's very interesting. The ESPN Plus numbers have been very low relative to what you hear Hulu and Amazon and Netflix talk about.
I also think it's important to note here too, Russell, that those streaming numbers aren't always readily available by the conference, too. So as we know that these studies are, they can, we, they're fluid kind of in the way that we get, as we get more data, we also update. So to keep in, keep that in mind, too, that those some streaming numbers aren't always readily available. So there could be some games that aren't in this number as well.
What's interesting, and Ann and Ann and John know this, up until a couple of years ago, ESPN Plus did not want to share any of its streaming audience. And and anecdotally, my guess is because the the numbers were lower than than kind of folks had had anticipated when you drill down to a specific event.
So so to the president's point, how do you help us understand that number in comparison to the billions of dollars versus 340,000?
Right. And that's, to be honest, kind of the $64,000 question. As as you see schools look at these new, or conferences look at these new media rights deal, and and as we've watched quite, you know, eerily as as the discussions with the impact of a broadcast network compared to a streaming platform. And that's where there are third parties who who are, because we, I do not know what those Hulu and Amazon numbers are compared to, obviously, ESPN shared that via via the schools, these ESPN Plus numbers. It it is a little bit of a slippery slope when you take a look at what, when you look moving forward in a streaming rights fee in conjunction or in partnership with with what a broadcast, how many broadcast appearances do we have in relation to how many games are streaming only? And what does that mean? And as we've anecdotally talked to the schools who we finish this up, I said, you know, if as I look at at some of the streaming folks, I want to see what upfront dollars they're going to give us for taking, because this is a pretty big risk from the school. Let's say if there's X amount of games that are only on streaming. To me, it's very similar to what you see MLS doing right now with Apple Plus, where they got a huge upfront amount for saying, hey, Apple TV Plus or Apple Plus TV, we're going to take a huge gable on you. But there was, there was money upfront because they're like, we're taking a risk here. So that's, you know, sir, that that's truly kind of the $64,000 question as you move forward to what is going to be the real value as you look at the next conference-wide media deal, especially as you look at the different streaming options that are going to be available to the conferences, i.e. the institutions.
I know Regent McDonald has a question. I want to make sure we we get to her question. One thing that I think that this does highlight, though, and I think it's important, is conference positioning. As we've seen the change of the old PAC-12 and as we as we launched the new PAC-12, or what the decline was from last year to this year, there are different tiers of eyeballs viewing those media packages related to those conferences. And I do think, you know, the the 1.5 billion is a product of the reach that we've had in eyeballs. And if we want to continue that, it's really important that we stay positioned well in a conference that continue to just to to get that reach as well. You compare that to other conferences, they're not getting this the same, the same reach in eyeballs. And we don't, we don't want to lose the national attraction that we have, that we have had.
Um, I want to move to Regent McDonald. I also want to clarify, when we're talking about streaming, are our current sports streaming?
They are within the affiliate affiliate conference agreements that we have. As we head into the the relaunch of the PAC-12, there are different, there are there are different constructs to how that will be. But currently, yes, through our WCC affiliate agreement, we have some sports that are streaming.
Is football streaming?
Regent Shower, I do want to underscore that. That's a really good question. But all for all of us in in athletics conferences, one way or another, these are bound into our media rights agreements. And we have not finished our media rights agreement for the PAC-12 for the period starting in FY '26, when we have what is essentially launched the new conference. So these are, that's why these are so important for people to understand, Russell, but they're also highly bound by conference agreements, meaning we can't independently vector all of these kinds of approaches.
Right, right.
Regent McDonald, our mathematician, we're talking numbers. Okay.
I'm I'm having trouble before the numbers with the model. I'm trying to understand the model. So from my perspective, when we put a sports team out to play another sports team and it's watched by 400,000 people, we're providing entertainment. How is the entertainment value of what we're providing being offset with this calculation about? If we were an infomercial, because we're not an infomercial, we're oh, commercial. We are providing entertainment. So why would we be seeing, why is this charge coming to us when we're not in this way? When we're not an information, infomercial, we're a entity that's providing entertainment that somebody's making a lot of money on somewhere. Thank you.
So so the valuation is truly, and 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 that's a a good point. As as we take took a look at, as we saw kind of the experts we used and and the other research, when it comes to, you are just taking into account the number of eyeballs that are viewing that game and that branding. But what's it, it does not take into account, and this was a discussion we had, as you talk to entertainment, let's say it's a 65 to nothing loss compared to a 45 to 42 thriller. And and what is the entertainment value of that, of of those two extreme games? It does not take that into account. It is truly the viewership multiplied by that that, the, hold up, what was the CPI? The two, 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 the cost per impression, that's it, the cost per impression of 1,000 viewers, which for the broadcast that we had, which was ESPN and and Fox Sports, was a $35 cost per impression. And then there is a multiplier on top of that that is utilized to essentially ascertain just the value of that, not, it doesn't take into account, and there are metrics that do that, whether it's a positive viewing or entertainment experience compared to a negative, which if I hope that answers your question.
I I think I'm thinking more about the television stations that are putting these on are getting revenue from the viewers. Is that factored into this in any way? Or are we putting the full cost on to us rather than saying, but we're not just doing an infomercial. We're providing an entertainment that brings money into that, into the entity that's airing it.
Judy, I would be happy to go over sort of how the how the construct works in the in the context of a conference. Because I think you're asking important but detailed questions.
That'd be great, Betsy. Yeah, let's defer for another time.
I'm happy to do that for for anybody. We'll do a boxes and lines financial assessment of how the how the the numbers, the flow from viewers to us.
Great. Thank you.
I think that that's really an important aspect that we need to spend some time on. I really, really wanted this presentation to occur before we start to look at an athletics budget. I have exceeded the time that I was allocated for this section, which is double the amount of time that was originally on the agenda. So I want to be cognizant of, we have a lot of material to go through. And this is clearly not enough time for us to to spend reviewing this really critically important impact study. Russell, you have several more slides. So to the board, I'd love it if you start to collect your questions. And I'd like for us to continue through the slides and maybe like five more minutes to try and wrap them. Okay, thank you.
All right. So we'll hustle. B, hit the next couple. All right. So game day economic impact. So essentially, taking those three areas into consideration, your actual athletic events, your football, your basketball, taking actual attendance of those. And then what is the impact of those individuals attending the events? The economic impact, not just to Washington State, but for the city of Pullman. And then that same methodology for any special events held on campus within athletic events. So that could be concerts. We had actually, Toledo, one of our other schools sent us all their commencement attendance, whatever might be held on those athletic facilities. And then the last one, all the summer camps that are held, where we had the raw attendance numbers for all the summer camps for the past three years. So again, using that economic impact multiplier that came out over the past three years at 103, 183 million total impact with obviously your game day and specifically football being the highest impact and just illustrating how important that is not just to the institution but to Pullman. B, let's go. What we'll kind of. Right. So the last, and I think this is, now, we have one more after this. So this talks about, this is kind of person, this not kind of, this is personnel-focused on what is the spending impact of your athletic employees, obviously, your student athletes who volunteer, which is critical, one of the core tenants of SAC. What is your student athletes, their spending impact within Pullman of their incidental? And then, of course, as we talked about graduating impacted. So that's broken down as we looked at this. That is your, and and there's three different numbers that are derived when you see this total number. It's your direct spending, your indirect, which is, hey, if I if I give a dollar to Bailey, how does she go out and spend that? And then the third factor is the induced spending, which kind of is the catch-all from all spending after that, which talks about higher raises and jobs that are created from that initial level spending. So overall, again, as you look at at the personnel impact, about 252 million over the past three years and and pretty consistent there in the mid 80 million per year as you look at the impact. And then the big report breaks down each of those categories, line item by line item, and illustrating the math and the methodology of of how all of that was was broken down. And then just real quick, where we did not have numbers, we essentially extrapolate from the numbers we do have to to kind of project what those previous years might be as you look at the graduating student athlete impact for the state of Washington. And then the last one, real quick, this is taking, with the exception of ticketing revenue, which we discuss in the game day, as well as concessions, this is all of the external revenue generated annually by Washington State Athletics. So again, excluding ticketing and concessions, because we discussed that in game day. It also excludes student athletic fees. And it also excludes direct or indirect institutional support. And then talks about the impact as Washington State Athletics generates external revenue and they use that external revenue to fund different things. What is the economic impact of all of the external revenue streams from athletics, which is fairly significant? And then the last two things, I just want to talk about real quick anecdotally. John had asked how how some of our schools have used this, and we've had two really nice case studies. University of New Mexico took this to their state legislature. And as we found out about three weeks ago, the legislature at New Mexico, and again, the athletics used evaluation study, got a 3.2 million. got a 3.2 million appropriation approved just for athletics. And then also on top of that, at their regents meeting, uh, the regents approved a student athletics fee increase that will generate 3.5 million in additional revenue for New Mexico athletics. Uh, on the other one, our very first one, Toledo. Uh, one of the big things that came out of there is is how they need to utilize their athletic facilities more. And so about three weeks ago, their first concert, and as we were talking to folks, and they could not remember the last time they hosted in the Glass Bowl, which is their football stadium, sold 20,000 tickets. And as their ED shared, they will, they being athletics will end up profiting or netting uh six figures in that, and they're hoping that's going to end up being closer to about $250,000 for them hosting that, which is, he said very candidly, would not have happened without the uh the valuation study of the value of their athletic facilities to the city of Toledo. So I know that was a lot in about four minutes. Um, but I know on these getting behind is not fun.
Thank you, Russell. I think that um this is exactly what we were looking for. Are there comments or questions from the board?
Yeah.
Regent Dickinson, um, I just, one, thank you very much for the study. I'd like to thank John and Anne for doing the study. This has been a long time coming. Um, there's nothing, in my opinion, that is very surprising for those of us that live in the digital space when it comes to marketing. Um, I'm the streaming thing is a conundrum for everybody. Um, whether you're trying to sell a banking product or um an athletic product. So we're still very, everybody's pretty new in that space, regardless of what Google and Apple like to claim. So um, I just appreciate the time. Um, I certainly will look forward to John and Leslie and Anne's presentation later in the meeting um to see and understand again how we continue to look to the future. A hundred percent agree with President Cantwell that it is time to move forward. Um, but I cannot and will not continue to overstate WSU Athletics is are one of our single biggest brand assets that um we have a lot of control over how we might be able to invest in something to get um a greater return on. So thank you for the um work on this. Appreciate it, everybody.
Any other regions? Yeah, Regent Pika.
Um, this is the President Cantwell. Um, is this data being used or being looked at by the by the PAC 12, by Teresa Gold?
Uh, this specific data probably hasn't been delivered, but I would um say that the PAC has uh uh remembered. So the PAC is is a is a is a integrated body doing media deals uh for uh an integrated number of teams with probably more sophisticated, so that more sophisticated data because the um, and this is just access, is pure access. What these guys have access to is what we've given them about us, plus all the modeling they've done, you know, over the years, they have really good models. What the PAC has is access to uh firms that have um uh just a broader reach and access to data, plus more experience doing the the uh analytics associated with revenue mo- this revenue modeling. And their and their focus isn't what this focuses, which is, you know, these guys have presented us with something that gives us the beginnings of how do we monetize the value of this brand? That's how I look at it. And that could be everything from how do we actually utilize our physical assets to how do we, where outside of the conference uh media deals can we monetize the eyeballs? So there's a big broad sweep of what this study gives us the ability to now start looking at. The PAC is looking very much because that's where we we, the presidents have driven them over many decades is uh is a is a media revenue model that allows us each institution to receive a certain relatively um measurable amount of money every year, so we can plan how to do everything else that we do. Does that make sense, Regent Pika?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I am going to to go ahead and move us to the next agenda item. It is my last meeting, so I am going to go ahead and just make some comments. I think we must be bolder about telling our stories, and we've talked about this at previous regent meetings. I think that the comments around the legislature, there's been resistance to take our story to the legislature as it relates to our athletics story. This is really powerful insight. I think the PAC 12 and I think WSU, we have to, we have to get out in front of this. And we really need to make sure that our story, our student athlete success is being heard. And we are seeking additional um donors that are willing to say yes. Uh, we're asking our WSU community to show up and to support our athletic event. So I think this is a multi-pronged approach that we really have to be aggressive about. And we do know that when we win, that it helps us continue to have the exposure that we need. And we are winning in multiple areas. So how are we telling that story? How are we ensuring that um our WSU athletics program is being highlighted for the brand that it is and will continue to be? So I'm done. I'm going to move us to our next uh our next uh area of focus, which is on um the multiple action items that we have today. So there are 17 to review. I'd like to go ahead and talk about our first action item, which uh are uh uh Vice President of Finance, Executive Vice President of Finance, sorry, I have um moved my screen a bit, and I want to make sure that I have your title correct. So Executive Vice President for Finance and Administration and Chief Financial Officer, Leslie Brunelli, will um really kind of kick us off and be present through most or all of our 17 action items, I think all of them. Uh, the first is the Vancouver proposed naming. So I'll let you kick off, and then I have some uh comments that I'd love to make, and then I'll pass it over to Regent Dickinson. So with that, Leslie.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Chair Shauer, and good morning, everyone. Um, uh, Chair Shauer mentioned this, um, in my role as the EVP and CFO, I have the honor of serving as the Chair of the Facility Naming Committee, which has the responsibility and the authority to make recommendations for all of the physical spaces on the campus, whether it be a classroom, a hallway, or even a an actual building structure. Um, today I am delighted to bring you um a request for to rename the WSU Vancouver Classroom Building to Netshammer Hall in recognition of Chancellor Mel Nets- Netshammer's outstanding leadership, serving as chancellor since 2020, 2012. Mel has obviously played a pivotal role in shaping you WSU Vancouver into the institution that it is today. There is a great deal of information included in your packet, including supporting letters from from many advocates for this. I think my favorite uh quote that I found in there is that Mel has been the chancellor at WSU Vancouver, while more than half of the alumni have been there under his tenure. I think that's a fascinating fact. A little bit about the building itself, so you can frame it. Um, the WSU Vancouver Classroom Building is one of the four original structures that are on that campus. Construction began in 1994 and was completed in 1996. At the time of construction, the cost was 36.2 million. That was fully funded by state appropriated dollars. The facility is 62,000 square feet approximately. In its lifetime, it has served many, many purposes, including as classrooms, as conference rooms, teaching and labs, faculty offices, as computing space, group study space, and it now accommodates the Carson College of Business faculty space, some wet lab. It's also the home of the information technology staff for the campus, houses our College of Arts and Sciences and our Public Safety Office. So it is significantly a multipurpose building. Um, the naming request was recommended by the Facility's Naming Committee and has been approved by former President Kirk Schultz in accordance with WSU's Executive Policy 9, which addresses our facility naming. And with that, I would ask that this item be, um, the committee recommends this item go straight to action. It was not a future action item at our April meeting.
Thank you, Leslie. So for those that uh that know me, know that I hail from Vancouver. And my uh path through the board was with the encouragement and support of our chancellor uh who has really only been the second chancellor at WSU Vancouver. And the legacy that Mel has had has been um significant. And so as Leslie mentioned, there are multiple letters of support included in the board packet. And so for those of you that didn't have the opportunity to participate and the celebration that we had on campus or haven't had a chance to review the letters, there are a couple quotes. As Leslie uh shared, there are a couple of things that I just really want to to highlight. Mel's approach to his work has been with grace, respect, and sincerity. That was um by Lynn Valenter, who was the previous Vice President of Finance and Treasurer. Um, Sharon Kraus mentioned Chancellor Netshammer's unwavering commitment to our students has been the cornerstone of his administration. Throughout his tenure, he consistently prioritized student success, resulting in increased enrollment and graduation rates for first generation and historically underrepresented students. Mike Worthy, who sat at this table with us, former Regent and um former member of the WSU Vancouver Advisory Council, mentioned Mel's widely known as a premier higher education administrator nationwide. He has built countless partnerships in Southwest Washington, cementing mutually beneficial relationships that will endure for decades. And lastly, I want to just mention, because so much of Mel's legacy is built around the students that he has impacted. And this classroom building is an area where students can gather. Our ASWSUV President Jacob Winston said, apart from his institutional leadership, Chancellor Netshammer has effectively and efficiently empowered student voices, actively listened, and selflessly made sacrifices to ensure that we were always placed at the forefront of decision-making processes. So I am thrilled to see this before the board and um to be able to to move forward with honoring Mel's legacy beyond the celebration, but um with bricks and um a building that we can really celebrate. So with that, um, I'd love to just see if there are uh any other regions that would like to make any other comments before we look at entertaining a motion.
Well, Lisa, I'll go. This is Regent Dickinson, and I'll be the one to call for the motion as well. But um as um kind of uh the individual and the leader of the committee that looked at this, and I know we have looked at this and wanted to do the right thing here, and we've been very thoughtful as a Board of Regents around this um moment to be able to dedicate this building to Provost Netshammer. I thought it was interesting that I saw a recent post from uh Mel um that actually, to quote him, he said that he woke up 13 years later, retired um as the uh WSU Vancouver Provost. And um he said, this is my home, this is my community. I will always continue to be a part of Cougar Nation and advocate for WSU Vancouver. And anybody that knows Mel, you know that he just speaks truth there and straight from the heart. So um I'm I'm really glad we're able to be here today to do this.
Would you like to go ahead and make a motion, Regent Dickinson?
Yes, thank you. Um, I move the Board of Regents approve the naming of the WSU Vancouver Classroom Building to Netshammer Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, and uh Regent um Serna, sorry.
Yeah, I can't remember my name either.
I know, sorry, I don't, I had to toggle back and forth. I don't see your face right now. When you get old, you have to see faces. Um, uh, for um all those in favor, please say yea.
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 Yea. Yea.
Those against? Those against, please say nay. Thank you. Motion passes.
All right, very exciting. And uh again, just want to thank Mel for his leadership. And we have the benefit of Mel uh serving in a senior advisor to the president role um and uh working closely with President Cantwell and the board. So with that, um, as Regent Dickinson shared, the motion has passed, and we will continue to move forward. Um, Leslie and Glenda are rejoining us along with Assistant Vice President for Budget and Planning, Chris Jones, Senior Director of State Relations, Chris Mulick, and Provost and Executive Vice President, Chris Riley Tillman. They'll present the fiscal year 2026 supplemental operating budget requests.
Thank you, Chair Shauer. Um, I will handle this item for us. This this is um the same item that we presented to you back in April with the hope that there are supplemental dollars available in the state budget that, of course, will remain to be seen. Um, the requests are two. One is for a master's entry to professional nursing degree program, a request for $1.4 million annually to begin that work. And then also the WSU ROAR stabilization and expansion. This is a program that operates within our College of Education, Sport and Human Sciences. It's a signature program to promote independent living and job skills for students with intellectual and development disabilities. Um, that is a $600,000 request annually. So these two items total a $2 million request.
Is there a motion?
I will take that uh action. Thank you, Chair Shauer. And I move that the Board of Regents approve the fiscal year 2026 state supplemental operating budget request and delegate authority to the president or designee to approve the final request and any adjustments that may be needed prior to submission to the Office of Financial Management, including development of additional decision packages if required to address strategic needs. The delegation of authority would be contingent upon the final request being presented to the full Board of Regents as an information item at the 20, September 2025 meeting.
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you, Regent Hunt. There is a second. Uh, is there any discussion?
If I may, um, Chair Shauer, I just, from a process standpoint, for all the people watching, thinks really important to understand that the future action item materials were presented in prior meetings and that the process here is to really attain alignment across the system and the enterprise so that we could do the work to capture the supplemental budget um dollars should they, you know, come to fruition. So so from a process standpoint, thinks it's important to just step back and understand that. Um, and if I may turn to anyone else uh who can add to that, otherwise I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. Seeing none, there is a motion and a second. Um, I'm not seeing any other discussion. So I'll go ahead and ask for all those in favor.
Bye.
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 Thank you. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Right, we'll move to the next item. Leslie and Olivia will present the next six action items related to capital projects. The first presentation will be the project budget for the WSU Pullman College of Agriculture, Human and Natural Resource Sciences, not Dairy Center Digestor.
You're one ahead of us. We have um action item number three, which is the supplemental capital budget request that follows the operating request. But that's Olivia also, and she is here and ready for us.
Okay, um, should we go ahead and do this one and then go back to the the one that I missed?
That's up to you.
Okay, let's do that, since I've already uh gone through this one. So uh I am one ahead. So Leslie and Olivia.
All right, the the not dairy request is for the digester. This was, these were dollars that we received in the supplemental budget in the last year. Olivia, can you very briefly describe this?
Uh, we received $10 million from the legislature to uh install a digester. We have uh um selected a design builder tentatively uh to decide on the site as well as the type of digester. And so based on the funding received, we're requesting your approval to establish $10 million for the project budget.
And there is no change in this item from what we presented in April?
That's correct.
So for the formal motion, I move that the Board of Regents approve the WSU Pullman Not Dairy Center Digester Project with a total budget not to exceed $10 million. Authorize the project to proceed to design and construction using the design-build process pursuant to RCW 39.10 and delegate authority to the president or designee to enter into any and all contracts necessary to complete the project within the budgeted amount.
Well, second.
Well, second.
Is there a second? Thank you, Regent Serna. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any, thank you. Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion passes. And I will take us back to the item that I passed. Thank you, Leslie. Fiscal year 2026 supplemental capital budget request.
Thank you. And this one won't be quite as quick as the operating budget request because we did make a change from the April meeting based on some advice that we had received from our folks in Olympia, including Glenda, Chris Mulick, and Chris Riley Tillman, who had a side conversation. We have made a change here, and Olivia will speak to that.
Thank you, Leslie. So last time, we had requested a supplemental state capital budget request of $9 million. This time, based on the advice that Leslie referred to, we are upping the request to $30 million. The $30 million in two parts, $23 million to address our deferred maintenance, including the $9 million that was presented last time, and $7 million to address a renovation, possibly of renovation of existing facilities in Spokane to house the team health program. The $23 million includes, as I said, the $9 million earlier, which is roofing and steam hot water in Pullman, in two buildings in Pullman, and also to address failing elevators and other MEP. MEP is mechanic electrical plumbing issues in the Pullman campus, but also across the system, including one in Puyallup. And so all of these issues around deferred maintenance also help us with our operating budget because as we are able to put in new components of buildings, then less care is needed by the operating staff on each respective campus.
So let me briefly highlight the comment that Olivia made about the Spokane campus and the possibility of renovating some space for the team health facility. As you know, between the April meeting and now that the state budget obviously concluded and has been signed into law, and the capital side of the bill did not include the funding for the team health facility, which we have been planning for more than four years now. What we are doing right now is we're bringing in a third party to do essentially a space audit of all of our space on the Spokane campus, looking at our classroom capabilities, our research capabilities, our office space, and consider if we can reconfigure the space here to suit the need that team health presents. And so if we are successful in doing that, we have some dollars left from the original planning funds from the prior biennium. We could use those and new funds to actually outfit that space in some way to suit that need.
Regent Dickinson?
Yeah, I just, one, wow, I love and appreciate your statement there, Leslie, and appreciate Olivia's leadership on this around a space audit. I don't think that is necessarily a core tenet of higher ed institutions to always do that. And I think that there's sometimes public perception that we have more space than we need. And I certainly know we get some of that feedback in Spokane. So I am very appreciative. I'm not suggesting we don't use our space effectively, but I appreciate going and looking and being really efficient at the moment and kind of turning over every rock that we have. So thank you. I just kind of wanted to call that out, and we'll be interested to understand what that might look like. But it just is prudent, and I think shows good fiscal responsibility on behalf of the institution. So thank you.
Thank you.
President Cantwell, I see your hand up. And Regent McDonald, I also saw you unmute. So President Cantwell?
Just want to underscore for all of the regions that, what Leslie alluded to is that we'll figure out how to do team health, and we'll do it in the space that we have to get started since we didn't get funding for a building. That doesn't mean that we won't eventually come back to that, but we'll do, we have to get started on team health. So we will figure out how to do it, and it may mean that we facilitate spaces that we already have for team health. And then as that capacity grows, we really build the case for a new building better and differently.
Regent McDonald, do you have anything you wanted to add? Okay. Is there any other region that has a question or comment? Okay, Regent Ramos?
Okay, great. Thank you. I move that the Board of Regents approve the WSU Systemwide Fiscal Year 2026 state supplemental capital budget request for a total of $30 million to address a longstanding deferred maintenance backlog of $1.8 billion, as well as emergent infrastructure failures across the system, and further delegate authority to the president or designee to approve any adjustment that may be needed before submittal to the Office of Financial Management, and to enter into any and all contracts necessary to complete the projects within the budgeted amount.
I second and really appreciate the work of the team going into putting this together.
Thank you, Regent McDonald. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, not hearing any opposed. Motion passes. All right. Now Leslie and Olivia will present the next five items since we didn't need that. Thank you for the flexibility.
Absolutely. Our next item is action item number five on your document, it's number E. This is the WSU Pullman Voilin College of Engineering and Architecture, the Schweitzer Engineering Hall, which is well under construction. If you have seen it, completely out of the ground and starting to look like a facility. This is a request to increase the project budget. You have heard this many, many times as we have worked this project through the process. This is, Olivia, is what she calls the accordion scope. We expand our contract and increase our budget as the dollars become real, as the dollars come in from pledges and other interest income. So Olivia, can you take this one?
Yes, so we are asking for your approval of the recommendation to increase the project budget to $80.44 million to reflect pledges received to date. As Leslie alluded to, we ask for your authorization to establish a budget based on pledges received, but we contract only based on cash received. And we have not, of course, received the $80.44, but we are doing well with the cash we have, and we'll be contracting as those pledges turn into cash overflow.
There is no change to this item from our April presentation.
Correct.
So I move that the Board of Regents increase the WSU Pullman VCEH Schweitzer Engineering Project Budget and further delegate authority to the president or designee to enter all contracts necessary for this phase of the project with a total project budget not to exceed $80,440,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Regent Serna. Any discussion? If you haven't been by the building, it's very exciting. Sorry, go ahead, Regent Ramos.
Well, I know I have a lot of airtime already, but I just have to make a comment. I have to express gratitude for everyone across the system who are providing these pledges that allow us to do these projects, and for Olivia and her team's discipline on cash management and commitment, and then the innovation that goes behind the bundling of the contracts from a procurement standpoint. So there's a lot to these projects that, so when I make a motion, it's that formality. It doesn't always represent the enormous amount of teamwork across the system. So that was my just comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion passes. Right, we're moving on to the next item, WSU Pullman Dodge and Hot Cell Facility Design Approval.
Thank you, Chair Shower. This item has also been before you quite a few times over the past 12 to 18 months. This, there are no change to this from our April meeting. Olivia, can you give us a very brief recap?
Yes, you recall, last time we had a presentation from the design team in addition, 5,000 square feet to the Dodge and facility. And the new addition would then house the hot cells for that particular research.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, I'll move that the Board of Regents approve the schematic design for the WSU Pullman Dodge and Hot Cell Facility Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Here, Regent Powell. All right, all those, is there any discussion? Any other discussion?
Just another comment again, this is a very important asset to our research enterprise. And just as a reminder, I, you know, we've been working on this for 12 to 18 months. A lot of ideas and data have been presented, and this is our formal approval of this phase of the project. And I thank everybody for their engagement in this.
Thank you, Regent Ramos. All right, I am going to go ahead and, all the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, seeing none, motion passes. We'll move to the next item. WSU System 2025 to 2027 State Minor Capital Renewal and State Minor Capital Improvement Projects Procurement and Contract Execution Approval. Leslie?
Thank you again. This item was also presented in April, but prior to the conclusion of the state budget cycle and the signing of the capital budget bill. As we did two years ago, what we are asking for is the ability to group our contracts together so that we can more efficiently allocate the work across our system for this. We have authority to issue contracts for an amount below this, but what we're trying to do is group them together, which puts us in the space where we do require your approval. Olivia, can you talk through the dollar amount and how we're doing this?
Yes, so as background, we received $40 million in what we call MCR, capital renewal, and $5 million in capital improvement, MCI. Our plan, similar to what we did last year, and going back to the comment that Regent Ramos made, we plan to bundle similar projects together and contract them so that there is greater efficiency in procurement and contract administration. One, one thing that's new is that on Tuesday, we received our new instructions from the Governor's Office, Office of Financial Management. Previously, these projects were capped at $2 million. They are now capped at $4. It does not change our request to allow us to bundle because we will be bundling projects of up to four, not that they all be four, but up to four, and they will exceed the $5 million delegated authority that we have. And so we're asking to be able to bundle them and quickly move through and expend the money and not come to you for every last thing to approve every single project.
Thank you, Olivia. Regent Ramos, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I move that the Board of Regents approve the WSU Systems 2025-27 State Minor Capital Renewal and State Minor Capital Improvement Projects, and delegate to the president or designee authority to group these minor capital projects into contracts that may exceed $5 million for the purpose of procurement and execution efficiency.
Second. Is there a second? Thank you, Regent McDonald. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right. WSU Pullman Science Building Project Budget Approval.
Thank you, Chair Shower. This is an exciting project. This is the middle of the process to bring a new science facility to the Pullman campus. And you'll recall that in the 2325 biennium, we had dollars to start the renovation of Boustead, Eastlake, and Abelson to start the domino so we can be able to do this. This will allow for planning for the new science building, but it will also allow us to demolish Heald Hall, which has been a long time coming. Olivia, can you talk through this $25 million project?
Yes, as Leslie says, we asked for and received $25 million. The work is a precursor to a request for construction in the next biennium, and we will be doing design work. The purpose of the building is teaching undergraduate science, mostly chemistry, as well as some research facilities. And we will be demolishing Heald Hall because the new building will be located on the site of Heald Hall. Heald Hall is lovely building that has outlived its useful life. And so maybe many of you have gone to class there at Heald, and so we will be demolishing that and putting a new building in place, also part of our initiative to renew the Pullman campus facilities.
So I move that the Board of Regents approve the WSU Pullman Sciences Building Project with a total budget not to exceed $25 million to authorize the project to proceed to design and construction using the design-build process pursuant to RCW 39.10, and further delegate authority to the president or designee to enter into any and all contracts necessary to complete the project within the budgeted amount.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Regent Hunt. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, Wenatchee Tree Fruit Research and Extension Center Plant Growth Facility Project Budget Approval.
Right, thank you, Chair Shower. This is our last capital budget item, and it's an exciting project that is over in Wenatchee. This one is an $18 million project request. We received $10 million from the state capital bill this year. Their balance of the $8 million is coming from proceeds from the Cosmic Crisp Apple and fundraised dollars. Again, this will operate very much like the Schweitzer Engineering Hall in that we are asking for your approval for the project budget, but Olivia will be contracting to the dollars that are actually available in cash to construct the facility. Olivia?
Yes, so as Leslie said, $18 million project budget to be established based on your approval, $10 from the state, $18 in gifts and royalties. The total cash is actually $15.5, so again, project budget of $18, contract based on $15.5, and the cash available. This is a greenhouse, and so it's in fact very scalable. We build the headhouse, and then we add modules as cash is received.
So I move that the Board of Regents approve the Wenatchee Tree Fruit Research and Extension Center Plant Growth Facility a total budget not to exceed $18 million to authorize the project to proceed to design and construction using the design-build process pursuant to RCW 39.10, and further delegate authority to the president or designee to enter into any and all contracts necessary to complete the project within the budgeted amount.
Thank you, Regent Ramos. Okay, thank you, Regent McDonald. Any discussion? I do think that it is important to emphasize what Olivia has consistently said. When there's cash, we move forward with the project up into that cash. Leslie has emphasized this as well. It is a really significant part of our fiscal management and our strategy for building, building. So I just really appreciate the diligence around this. So thank you very much. Hearing, no one else has any other comments to make? I'll ask if, we'll go ahead and take, go ahead.
Kent Wright has his hand up.
Regent Wright? Thank you. Just a quick question. Do I understand that the royalties from the Cosmic Crisp are five and, almost five and a half million dollars? Is that correct? five and almost five and a half million dollars, is that correct?
That is the amount we're using for that, yes.
Wow, thank you. What are the questions?
We need more apples.
Right. Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, hearing none, motion passes. All right, we are going to move into um, our proposed revisions to Board of Regents Policy Number Five Debt Management Policy. And so we have joining us Senior Associate Vice President and Deputy CFO Matt Skinner to present the next two action items with Leslie. The proposed revisions to the debt management policy and establishing a revolving bank line of credit. So with that, Leslie?
Thank you, Chair Shower. The next two action items do go together. I believe they may require two different motions. I haven't read the script close enough to catch that. But the first is to make a change to the debt management policy that would allow for us to secure um, a revolving line of credit. Um, we had a robust discussion about this in April, but I've asked Matt to hit the highlights of this so we can move forward.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Good morning, everybody. As Leslie mentioned, we are seeking a line of credit as what we call a financial insurance policy for the university. This is intended to cover an unforeseen and unexpected circumstance where there'd be a short-term or temporary gap in operating revenues and cash flows of the university. Based on our conversations with the board in April, we have added an enhancement to the proposed changes to the board policy. That's a new step in our authorization to use the line of credit, which would be that the president and the Executive Vice President for Finance Administration will consult with the university's independent financial advisor, that's public financial management at this time. They would consult with the independent financial advisor prior to seeking approval from the board chair and the chair of the Finance Administration Committee before proceeding with the drawdown. All of our other procedures that we proposed and discussed in April remain in place. As a reminder that each subsequent board meeting, we will be back to report the status of any draws on the line of credit to the board as well as progress in repaying that. Um, just to ensure full accountability to the board and the use of debt. Um, so as Leslie mentioned, action item ten would um, authorize and approve those amendments to the Board of Regents Policy Number Five on Debt Management. And then action item eleven is the vehicle by which we would secure a line of credit. The proposed line of credit that you delegate to the president or her designate is a fifty million dollar line of credit, not to exceed fifty million dollars with the associated interest costs and fees.
I just want to add a comment that I think it is important for those that um, may be watching or later take a look at this. Um, the board chair and the chair of the finance committee are two separate people, so we have two members of the board, which good governance is that shared governance with um, our CFO and our president. So I just think that that is really an important part of the policy that's been put forward. It was the result of a good conversation at previous meetings, and I really appreciate um, the work around reflecting the board's comfort with this and the need for us to move forward, um, both with the line of credit and with policies that reflect the way in which um, we can continue to remain um, actively involved in understanding how we're utilizing that line of credit, paying it back, and the strategy to implement um, ensuring that we have this in place and that it's being monitored. So thank you very much. I'll pass it over to Regent Ramos if you have any other additional comments or um, if you're ready to make a motion.
Uh, I'll just add that um, this, these two uh, proposals uh, will help us with uh, operational health. Okay, so the team has proactively looked at all the tools uh, needed to run the entire institution, and these are tools that uh, will maybe needed um, in terms of governance and risk management. So for the first motion, I move that the Board of Regents adopt the proposed revisions to the Board of Regents Policy Number Five Debt Management Policy authorizing the issuance of short-term credit facilities, including lines of credit and establishing parameters and reporting requirements for its use.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Regent Wright. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Regent Ramos, keep us moving.
Thank you, Chair Shower. Um, so the second part of this um, uh, initiative is a motion to, let's see, um, I move the Board of Regents authorize issuance of a revolving line of credit with the net indebtedness not to exceed fifty million plus related interest origination and maintenance costs and delegate authority to the president or designate to select one or more banks and/or dealers and execute agreements and other documents in connection with the issuance and delivery of the credit facility.
There a second?
Second.
Thanks, Regent Wright. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Thank you so much for both of those.
Thank you for your leadership, Leslie, and getting that done. Thank you, Matt. Um, I think this will help everyone sleep a little better at night, just knowing that we have this ability to put this in place. So. All right, uh, we will now be joined by Vice President for WSU Advancement and CEO of the WSU Foundation, Mike Connell, and Senior Associate Vice President for Constituent Development Units, Don Shear, to present proposed amendments to the WSU Foundation Consolidated Endowment Fund Investment Policy. I do want to note for the record that this item is being presented as an action item rather than a future action item in accordance with the Board of Regents Bylaw Two uh, period twelve, period C. All right, proposed amendments, go ahead.
Thank you for pointing that out. While it is, we're asking you to take it straight to action. We did have considerable discussion about this item throughout the spring. Um, I will also note that Mike Connell is traveling, so Don is here and can answer all of your questions, so ask him lots. Um, this um, proposed amendment was drafted by Terry Kelly, Counsel for um, the WSU Foundation, and we had Danielle Hess on our staff take a look at it as well, and and she suggested some changes that Terry accepted. For the most part, the the updates are perfunctory, things that we would be changing um, throughout time. Um, the big challenge that we had was you'll recall that the WSU Foundation and the Investment Committee of the WSU Foundation had approved a change that would have shifted the distribution percentage from five point five percent, remaining at five point five percent, but pushing four percent currently into the institution. That would have dropped to three point seven five, allowing for that quarter of a percent to continue to fund advancement operations. We have removed that. That is the significant change from the earlier discussion. The reinvestment um, article still remains in there. That is our opportunity to allow dollars that are at WSU to shift back to the foundation so they can earn the greater um, endowment uh, return. Those are, will be subject to the university's approval, and our units will have the opportunity to hold funds back from that. Um, the the most I anticipate, um, moving back to the foundation would be somewhere below nine or ten, nine or ten million dollars. Um, is there anything else in the the changes, Don, that you think we need to point out?
Uh, just that they were approved by both the uh, Foundation's Investment Committee and then the the broader, the broader Board of Directors by the Foundation. Um, this is June last month.
Yeah. At our Tri-Cities meeting, that's right.
And I just want to confirm, Regent Ramos, you uh, participate on um, the Endowment Committee, so as we, the Investment Committee, I mean, is that correct? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, go ahead.
Did you want me to make a comment on that?
So I was just trying to connect the dots like you um, often do, so that we're again showing um, how the board is actively engaged in the conversations um, at the committee level prior to um, having it come before the board. But go ahead, Regent Ramos.
Well, I'll just add that the conversation on these changes um, has been in the works since, I think, late last uh, fall. And what we didn't know then in context was all the financial and budget and executive order and research, you know, impacts that have come our way through the first and second quarters. And as a result of that context, uh, we've heard from many constituents, and and frankly, this is another example of where we really are listening and we're learning and um, we're trying to be agile with the information that we receive. And so um, the initial proposal to change um, the allocation uh, was adjusted frankly in light of the very practical challenges that we have right now. So um, I would just add that the Investment Committee re- uh, reviewed this last month. And um, we'll just echo Don's uh, report that we did approve um, the change. So with that, I'll put my other hat on in terms of the Finance Committee Chair here and uh, give you the motion uh, which is to, I move the, that the Board of Regents approve the proposed amendments to the WSU Foundation Consolidated Endowment Fund Investment Policy Statement and Spending Policy as recommended by the Investment Committee and approved by the WSU Foundation Board of Directors uh, at the May eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Thank you, Jen. Thanks, Regent Hunt. Um, is there any? Uh, is there any? No, that's great. Is there any discussion, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Okay, excellent. We're going to keep moving. Um, I will promise you a break, but I'd like to keep us moving forward. Uh, Leslie is now joined by Vice President and Chief Human Resources Officer Jennifer Klein to present the WSU Voluntary Early Retirement Incentive Program. I do want to note for the record that this item is being presented as an action item rather than a future action item in accordance with the Board of Regents Bylaw Policy uh, two twelve C. So with that, I will go ahead and pass the time over to to you, Leslie, and to Jennifer.
Thank you so much. And we are also joined by Anne Monroe, who coordinates all of the university's benefit offerings. Um, this is an item, um, the Voluntary Early Retirement Incentive Program that came forward as we were having our budget discussions even prior to really getting into the heart of budget development this year. Particularly on the academic sides, I believe our provost had been hearing from the deans that having this as an option to be able to incentivize um, retirement uh, would be beneficial in terms of meeting budget expectations. Um, with that, I'm going to ask Jennifer Klein to take over and walk us through what this program is and frankly, what it isn't as well.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, good morning, Regents. Thank you for having me. I am here today to talk a little bit about the Voluntary Employee Retirement Incentive Program for participants in the Washington State University Retirement Plan, where TIAA is our vendor. Offering this type of program requires changes to our plan documents. Changes to the plan documents for the WSU Retirement Program require board approval. And so that's why I'm here today. We can move forward. Um, today I am going to talk a little bit about the different retirement plans offered at WSU. Information on the WSURP, a history of offerings that we have done in this space in the past, what this current offering would look like, and then provide a little bit of information as to what we're hearing from the Office of Financial Management, uh, which is the umbrella for the Department of Retirement Systems and what we may see in the future. The retirement plans offered at Washington State University are laid out here. Washington State University and the Board of Regents are the plan administrators for the WSURP. There are other programs offered within the Department of Retirement Systems listed here. Eligibility is dependent upon employee type and when you were hired. We can move on. What is the Washington State University Retirement Plan? It's a four oh three B tax-deferred contribution plan with a one hundred percent match that's immediately vested and portable. We do have contribution rates which are equally matched by WSU, and we have a chart here outlining age and percentage of monthly earnings. Contributions, of course, are subject to an annual max set by the IRS. And I give a little bit of information here on current makeup of those programs. They're of the roughly six thousand eight hundred retirement eligible employees, roughly thirty-five hundred of them participate in the WSURP. Further breakdown here just demonstrates the numbers in each one of our employee types across the system. Thank you. We have offered early retirement incentives at WSU in the past, most recently in two thousand nine and in two thousand ten. Although it was discussed at length uh, in twenty twenty around COVID, it was decided at that time not to move forward with such an offering. We have offered this in different ways. We have offered it in two thousand nine as a tax-free payment to a VIBA account. And in two thousand ten, we offered it as a lump sum payment. We do have eligibility requirements that have to be met for these plans. And so give a little bit of information on the number of eligible employees in those plans, as well as the number of individuals who pursued that incentive at the time. I'd also like to note that in two thousand ten, this was offered to both participants in the Washington State University Retirement Plan as well as to DRS person- participants, but in two thousand nine, it was only offered to WSU participants. Okay, thank you. Moving forward to twenty twenty-five, the recommendation for the very eligibility criteria to qualify is age fifty-five with ten years of service. This is a minimum no- level of normal requirement in the WSURP plan. There are also some recommended exclusions, including individuals who have already submitted a retirement notice, are on less than fifty percent of position. And then other considerations would be given for employees with fixed term positions, as well as contracted employees. Eligible for this criteria are seven hundred and sixty employees across faculty, AP, and supplemental service. The recommendation in terms of the incentive and how it's been formulated is one week of the employee's annual base salary for each year of eligible retirement service, not to exceed twenty weeks. For our nine and twelve-month positions, we would make those calculations based on different criteria with our nine-month positions ending on May fifteenth of twenty twenty-five, and then our twelve-month positions, we would calculate as of July fifteenth of twenty twenty-five. For illustration, I have given some examples here as to what that calculation might look like, taking into consider, consideration uh, full-time equivalency, years of eligible service and base salary. For in our nine-month employees, we divide by thirty-nine weeks, and for our twelve-month employees, by fifty-two weeks in order to get that incentive payout amount. For this offering, it would be in a wa- in a lump sum payment, subject to all applicable taxes. Just anticipating some questions here, payments cannot be deposited into a voluntary, uh, I'm sorry, into a deferred compensation plan or voluntary investment plan. All other payroll deductions would apply, of course. For this offering, the recommenda- the recommended election period is not long. So with board approval today, we would open the election window on Monday, June ninth, and it would close on Thursday, July third. Uh, July fourth is on a Friday this year and a university holiday. In terms of process, Human Resource Services would review all of the requests for eligibility as well as consideration in a role with a retirement date no later than August thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. Other limitations within the very part, for a very participant in the program would be return-to-work limits with a no-return for five years. We do recognize that there may be extraordinary circumstances for which an exception may need to be made, which would be done in coordination with a Provost and Executive Vice President Riley Tillman, uh, Executive Vice President Brunelli, and of course, with Dr. Cantwell. There is a cost recovery period that we need to report to the Office of Financial Management at the end of the fi- of the fiscal year. In years past, we've also been asked or required to submit quarterly reports to OFM. This is both for the WSU Retirement Plan as well as if it were offered for the Department of Retirement Systems Plan. And I think one of my bullets that cut, cut, cut off at the bottom there were that WSU expects these positions to be um, closed and not reopened for uh, for the biennium. What this is not, a little bit more about that, is the Department of Retirement Systems. They have a completely separate process from the process that I have before you today. We've been monitoring this very closely as it's been coming through the legislature. In 2025-27 cycle, it is written into law, so it is available. At this point, we're pending Office of Financial Management guidance in terms of what the cap for participants may be. In the 23-25 cycle, it was $25,000 per participant. We anticipate it may be close. Just for historical purposes, in the previous cycle, the cap was set at $23,000, so we moved up just a little. So we don't expect to see significant gains there, if at all, on the cap. And what potential exceptions or exclusions may apply under the Department of Retirement Systems process. Once that guidance is released, WSU will consider options for our Department of Retirement Systems employees. OFM has been a great partner, and they have indicated that they expect guidelines in early June. Just for comparison's sake, I put together a little chart here that demonstrates Department of Retirement Systems requirements, as well as what those caps are and what those details are in terms of return to service, if there is a draw requirement, et cetera. So you can see those in a side-by-side type of way. I realize that I moved quickly. What questions do you have, Judy?
I wanted to ask a little bit about the short time period for people making this decision. It feels like it's a really fast turnaround. Is there any flexibility there?
So the time period was put together in order for us to really maximize on cost recovery as we move into the new fiscal year. Any time that this is offered, so on a fiscal year basis, we have to come to the board and seek approval. We're already a little bit late in the cycle with it being June. In order to achieve the maximum cost recovery, the window is short.
Judy, there's also the impact of faculty electing this option and us preparing for the fall semester, if that's the case. And so the earlier we would know if somebody wants to go down this pathway, the better we're going to be able to prepare to fully support our students.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I just, again, appreciate Provost Riley Tillman too, just speaking to this delicate balance that you all on this call today are trying to find between student experience, taking care of our faculty, but also trying to fiscally be responsible for the dollars that we have. So these things, and Jennifer, thank you for the presentation, they're never easy and they are incredibly challenging, and just appreciate the thoughtfulness going into this particular effort here.
I second that, Marty. Well said.
Okay, I absolutely agree. And Jennifer, having had the opportunity over the last couple of years to work with you, I am grateful for the way in which you continue to be human-centered, both faculty, staff, students, everyone that we're interacting with, and also advocating for what's best for WSU. It's not an easy balance, and I just appreciate your leadership. Regent Ramos, are you comfortable making a motion?
Yes, I move that the Board of Regents approve the Voluntary Early Retirement Incentive Program, which we just went through, for employees in the Washington State University Retirement Plan, WSURP, and authorize the president or designee to offer the incentive to any eligible member of the WSURP.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Regent Pika, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We have one other item I'd like to go ahead and move forward with, and then we will take a break. So at this time, Leslie will be joined by John Harlow and Anne McCoy, who are back again, this time to present Cougar Athletics Media Rights Partnership Contract. So I do also, again, want to note for the record, this item is being presented as an action item rather than a future action item in accordance with the Board of Regents' Bylaws 212(c). With that...
Yeah, Anne and John, if you will, take it over.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm going to share my screen here, and I'm also, a lot of pressure being last before break, and I know we went over a lot of time last, in our last item, so make sure we get back on track here. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Awesome. Well, thank you. And again, this is an action item where we're seeking delegated authority to sign an agreement for a long-term multimedia rights partnership, or MMR, as you'll hear me say, on behalf of Athletics. And I want to make sure that there's no confusion. This is not our conference media deal. This has nothing to do with television. This is strictly our sponsorship and advertising rights for the foreseeable future. So a little background on what a multimedia right partnership can do for WSU. These partners work to connect the national brand of Washington State to fans and external stakeholders across the country. They do this through advertising and sponsorships, naming rights, hospitality, radio and streaming, podcasts, and other forms of multimedia platforms. These partners have a direct impact on the game day fan experience, the impact, the reach, and perception of the brand, and they bring relationships, channels for distribution of content, and industry-best practices that we wouldn't otherwise be able to bring to the table. By engaging with a national MMR partner, we sought to share our strong national brand with other local and national partners in exchange for increased visibility and opportunities to generate new revenues. What was our process and how we got here? In January of this year, we launched a rigorous RFP, bringing several strong candidates to the table. Our committee, with members from both Athletics and main campus, narrowed that field down to three finalists and invited each of those three finalists to visit campus. During their day-long visits, they met with various groups of both Athletics and campus staff for presentations and additional questions and insight. Ultimately, the groups selected PlayFly Sports Properties as an apparent successful bidder to move forward. So what we were looking for through this process was a partner that could push our boundaries. WSU is a national brand, and we fully intend to not only continue that for the foreseeable future, but we will elevate this brand to new heights. We were looking for a partner that would make us uncomfortable and stretch us to reach those new heights as a brand and as a department, and ultimately drive new forms of revenue. We needed a partner that would be here in Pullman, in and around our staff every day, that could understand our challenges and opportunities, to best then pursue local, regional, and national brands that best represented WSU and could drive transformational revenue growth. It was clear through this process that PlayFly understood our potential, understood the necessity to keep WSU at the forefront of the national stage, and understood that we were a brand that could continue to develop further beyond the strong legacy that exists today. They shared data-backed processes. They shared new ideas for game day, and enhanced NIL service for our student athletes, and brought national relationships that made it clear that this was the right partnership moving forward. And the money was really good, too. PlayFly has upwards of 65 collegiate properties, several in the pro space, and continue to expand their share of the collegiate MMR market as the months move forward. So where we are today and what we're asking for, we have not yet signed the contract with PlayFly as a dollar value, or the length of this deal requires board approval to move forward. We have signed a letter of intent in order for PlayFly to begin mobilizing to better position them to hit the ground running once the current contract ends on June 30, as to not put them further behind track as football season is fast approaching at the beginning of August. So today, we're seeking the Regents' approval to move forward negotiations with PlayFly and delegated authority to sign the long-term agreement once we reach that stage of negotiations. Happy to answer any questions about that process or PlayFly.
Question or comments? I see, Regent Serna, you look like you might be thinking about a question.
I do. A couple of things. First of all, what might we see different than a game day experience? And then, second of all, would, well, they also have a control who our play-by-play people are and our broadcast teams?
I can address a couple of those first, John, and then feel free to chip in, obviously. As with our previous partner, there's a partnership relative to the play-by-play personalities, and so we've already discussed that as part of the process. And, you know, we do get input, as always. Ultimately, they are employed through the multimedia rights partner. And so relative to the process, I don't think you'll see much of a difference there. And, you know, we've made our feelings known relative to our current play-by-play staff and, you know, the tremendous partnership that they bring in keeping that continuity. And then as far as the game day experience, I think where you'll see an impact with the partnership with PlayFly is specifically around a lot of the pre-game and general fan amenities relative to, you know, how they'll approach that and how they'll partnership, partner with us, and kind of where we look to go in the future. So they will play a part of it, and being partners, but also, you know, kind of proactively helping us find ways that we can better serve our fans. So, John, what would you add to that?
Well said. Only one additional thing on the in-game, during-game elements. They have direct input on all of our in-game assets. So who we're highlighting, when you see students on field getting recognized, participating in games, and our partnerships around the stadium, they'll have direct input on how those play out throughout the script. Regent Dickinson?
Regent Dickinson. Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Can you just elaborate a little bit on how, when you stated that they are incorporated into the Pullman campus experience, if you will? And so if you can touch on that. And then my other thing is, is I'm all about game day, and I love the whole concept of a more, a bigger approach candidly around a weekend experience in Pullman versus a game day, because nobody that we need coming to our games is coming usually for just the day. We need them to figure out how we get them for the weekend. But what about, and how do they interact, and what's their focal on some of our other major assets like women's basketball and the amazing swimmers I got to meet recently at the dinner that I was at, and so many of the golf teams? Like, what, how do they integrate all these other really important sports for us as well?
All of the above. So PlayFly will have the rights to each and every one of our sports. So every partnership, every sponsorship will have an impact on all of our sports. It's not just related to football, where it might be most visible to the masses when you show up on a game day. That's obviously going to be the football experience. But women's basketball, all the elements that we're showing on the screens, the script reads, the partners that we're engaging with, that'll have a direct impact on all of our sports. So this is not just football-centric. What we are discussing with here in Pullman, historically, our general manager for our multimedia rights partner has not been in Pullman. It's been in a different city, and they come in town on game days. And that's been a piece that's been, that's been missing. We need this general manager moving forward to live, eat, breathe, and sleep just as the rest of our WSU athletic leadership does, be in and around our meetings, hear what we're doing, hear from our student athletes. That way, they are integrated fully into the processes of what we're doing each and every day, and not just an afterthought in us playing catch-up here and there. It needs to be part of the fabric of what we're doing every day.
John or Anne, do they provide, and I guess this is one of the questions that I have kind of in the back of my head, of how do we find partners like PlayFly that perhaps can expose us to some non-traditional sponsors, corporate sponsors? We have, we tend to go to the state, like, we have a very specific well in the state of Washington, which I fully understand. But can they? And do they have access for us to go bigger and broader on a national scale level from a corporate sponsorship standpoint? Do they give us any guidance? Can they connect us? How does that work?
Yeah, very much so, and a great question. So PlayFly is national. They've got 65 and growing collegiate properties as of now, all across the country. Part of the allure for us in choosing them was because of their national presence, up and down the East Coast, Midwest, and a heavy presence here, not just on the West Coast, but the Pacific Northwest as well. So that was part of the presentation that they gave to us, and they're continuing to expand. And again, it's not just in the collegiate space. They have some corporate entities that they work with. They also have pro entities. And so that was something for us as well, not just to do what other colleges are doing, but to look at others outside the industry and how can we pull from that and move us forward for new revenues.
The one thing I would add to that, and I think one of the things we're excited about to John's point in the presentation about someone that'll push us, is really someone that will think outside the box and figure out ways that Washington State University can really, you know, be exposed to a wide variety and not just kind of, you know, rinse-and-repeating sort of, you know, mindset, but also the uniqueness that our different sports and programs can offer, as opposed to, you know, this is what we're doing for football, and then just, you know, see it again, see it again, see it again, and the other sports. And so I think we're really excited about the potential they saw. And quite frankly, I think the fact that we feel like we've been, you know, kind of underutilized, and I think a way that the brand can be out there much more.
Well, and I think to, going back to Regent Shauer's very first comment, this is an entity that we should be relying on to do our, like, how do we tell our story differently on a much different scale?
I have a follow-up question, and forgive me if you've already covered it and I missed it. How will this help us elevate with PAC-12, our brand as well? So not just our brand that we're able to amplify, but how do we ensure PAC-12 is amplifying our brand as well? Will this organization, will this contract help us engage there as well?
Could I take a stab at that, John, and then let you dig in? Because John will know the details better. But all of these, you know, just a reminder, we were Learfield until recently, which is really what all of our incoming Mountain West peers, new peers in the PAC will be. These confluence of different tiers of media partners, the ones with the conference and the ones that we hire on our own, they interact in a number of ways, some of them fairly complex. Our partners that we choose in multimedia rights absolutely influence what the media rights deals look like in the PAC-12. So when you have PlayFly and Learfield and others for all of the partners, you get a fairly complex scenario, Chair Shauer, that does amplify work that is done by this partner for us, but not in a linear fashion, really in an integrated fashion. I think we are at a distinct advantage, and kudos to the team for cutting a deal that got us out of a decent, you know, very decent former partnership, but one that did not, as A.D. McCoy said, really begin to expand the capacity to amplify on our own what we want to about our entire athletics program, which I think is really maybe what you're talking about, Marty, is how do we, there is much work to be done, but this is a new team that really brings new things to the table for us.
Maybe if I can add too, again, I just have to emphasize how much we really are trying to listen to all the inputs. And the inputs across all of our constituents, again, have said, we've got to challenge ourselves to look forward in a more innovative manner. And this auxiliary enterprise, from a, you know, holistic standpoint, amplifies the entire brand, which is also a reflection of academic excellence and everything else that we do from a student success standpoint. So I just want to thank the team for really owning the challenge and not being a victim to all of things being thrown at us, but looking forward. We've got to look forward, and this proposal will challenge the team to be much more innovative, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Regent Ramos. Regent Pika?
Just a quick question. How long, this contract, how long is it with them? John, Anne?
We're looking at 10 years.
Thank you.
Which is, which is the common length in these, because you need that longer to get the value and the partnerships up and running.
Okay, I'm going to ask another follow-up. 10 years seems like a long time if you're not doing a good job. So can you tell me what, what does it look like if it isn't, we're not seeing the results five years in? Are there penalties? And how do we hold this team accountable? And I really appreciate President Cantwell's comments about integration. That's what we're looking for. But I also am looking for us to be aggressive. And so I'm just curious, locking in a 10-year contract, things have changed a lot in the last two years. How do we make sure that they're adapting, innovative, and continuing to perform for us?
Yeah, 100%. We will... Yeah, 100%. We, well, we demand that first of all. And then we'll make sure that there are carve-outs throughout the, throughout the contract. Now, mind you, we are asking for approval to enter into these negotiations. So we have not had the ability to, to get to that stage. But it is top of mind to make sure that we're, that we're nimble and we can pivot as the market demands it.
And Chair Shauer, I would just underscore, for this company in particular, the, 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 the level to which they can enable us to rise aggressively will be a huge selling point for them as they move forward to capture more and more of this market. And so at least for some period of initial years, there's a real synergy between what we seek and what they seek, which is one of the reasons to seek them as a partner.
Thank you, Regent Ryan.
Thank you. I'm supportive of this conceptually, but Regent Shauer, I liked your questions. I'm wondering, are there benchmarks if not achieved that there are exit opportunities to wind down the contract sooner than 10 years? Thank you.
And that's what we'll be seeking in, in the contract. And again, we're, we're not to that stage of negotiations with them yet, but we'll, that's certainly a priority that we make sure that we have those abilities to pivot. Because we can't, and not to, you know, our current partnership, we've been with them in 25 maybe plus years. And, and you have to be able to refresh on a more frequent basis than that. And so we have to make sure that one, we're leveraging to get them up and running so we can reach their full potential over the course of this term, but also allow us to pivot swiftly if the opportunity suggests such.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question? I, I just want to get a better idea of what we want. I think we're looking for these folks to, to be bold and, and so what would that mean? What are we going to see that's different? Give me an idea of that. Right now I'm not seeing that.
Well, again, they've got several different channels for distribution to get our content out there. And we need to, we, so historically, our, and this is part of the other presentation as well, but we, we have been very focused on updating and providing information. And we have got to get to a place that we're enhancing the brand, telling our story. And they have channels to be able to do that in a more just creative storytelling way versus just factual, updated information. And, and we've got to, we've got to enter a new space that we, that we do that. And so whether this is podcasts, which we have not had historically, or getting us into different spaces on the creative, they just have more channels than what we've been able to have before to reach some assets.
Let me underscore something because a bunch of you have asked questions about the difference between where we were and, and the, and the era that we're moving into where athletics is entertainment, college athletics is entertainment. This is a company that focuses more on that, that entertainment aspect through the lens of storytelling than just delivering numbers.
The, the one thing if I could add on to both President Cantwell and John's comments is, is I think if you think of it as a multifaceted partnership, you know, we're talking about not only selling assets relative to sponsorships and, you know, a variety of different things to generate revenue. We're talking about kind of distribution and fan entertainment value relative to pre-game and a lot of assets and things around our game, but also those kind of think outside the box, you know, things that we could be doing that they have experience at other universities, but then also potentially using resources to help bolster NIL and other things that are constantly evolving. So it really is a true multifaceted partnership that can not only help generate revenue, but also exposure, but also increase, you know, kind of that, that entertainment value as we go forward.
Regent Blinkenship, you've had your hand up.
Oh, yes. Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted to comment, I like the concept of, of expanding potential national branding, but I think it fits and dovetails with the president's comments of, we have to leave the past in the past and look for something broadening, bold and new. And I like opening the door to that. And I believe Steph has heard, you know, the caution of Regent Wright. But we can, I think we can put all this together and I look forward to further reports on where we are with this idea. So I'm supporting, I'm supporting.
Thank you, Regent Blinkenship. I think at this point, let's go ahead and move forward. Regent Ramos, are you ready to make a motion?
Sure. I move that the Board of Regents authorize the university to enter into a multimedia rights contract for WSU athletics and delegate authority to the president or designate to negotiate and execute the contract with a potential total value of up to $40 million.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Regent Cernan and Regent McDonald. Is there any discussion?
Okay. Yeah, I do have one.
Yeah, Regent Pika.
Question, sorry. In the selection of this firm and in terms of like who's sitting around the table, our partner, the city of Pullman, are they involved at all in this, John or Ann? We started talking about game, you know, day experience, that kind of thing. How are we in coordination? How are we aligned?
Regent Pika, if I could inter, so we are absolutely working with the city on many things, but not on the development of contracts.
No, I understand that. I just, when I think about a game day experience, for example, I think how important it is how you enter the city, how you exit the city, things like that, or things that are friendly. And I just, we are, we do have that kind of understanding in relationship with the city. I guess that's where I'm, I'm going with that.
Yeah, and, and good question, Regent Pika. This, this is not necessarily going to deal with logistics of, of a game day, but more amplifying the, the brand to get the content out there and what elements they're seeing once they're here. But we are in constant discussions with the city on how we, again, make it more of a weekend experience and how to make sure ingress, egress is, is as smooth as it can possibly be.
Good. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment. I think there has been some really, really good in, interaction between the Regents and President Cantwell and John and, and Ann. I would like to request, so I am not offering amendment to the motion, but I would like to request that A.D. McCoy and President Cantwell have a conversation with our board chair, which will be Regent Ramos here and very soon, and our Chair of Finance, just to provide some details on the contract as you move forward with that so that there can continue to be communication with the board relative to, to what you're putting in place. So this is a move forward with a pretty significant contract since we haven't had this as an information item and it's gone straight to action. Just really requesting that there continue to be a conversation with our board chair and our finance chair as we move forward.
And I would, I would really like to have those interested be prefaced by a presentation from Ann and John regarding how the Learfield contract worked over the last 25 years. Because if you don't know that, then going into this next phase will, won't make as much sense. So I think that would be step one that I would request.
Even better. I think that's great. Thank you. Any other discussion, comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion passes. I think this is a really good conversation and it took us a little longer than what was anticipated. So I am going to give everyone a 10-minute break. I'm sorry that I can't give you a little bit more, but we do have a lot of really important content we need to move through. So I'm going to go ahead and start our meeting back at 10:55. So the Regents will now take a break for the next 10 minutes. We'll reconvene at 10:55 this morning. Thank you.
Okay, 10:56. Everyone got a little bit of a break. We are back and live on YouTube. We are continuing to move forward with our board meeting and we have three remaining action items to review. So I just want to go ahead and have us just dive right in. These are all important items that we're covering today. I want us to allow ourselves enough time to have good dialogue, to be able to answer questions and to continue to move forward. So at this point, we will go ahead and have Chris Jones join Leslie to present the fiscal year 2026 university operating budget. Leslie?
Thank you so much. Kyle, can you go ahead and bring up the slides? Thank you so much. As you all know, budget development is a system-wide effort. In this year, we delayed our budget hearings internally to accommodate the arrival of our new president on April 1st. There's probably no better way for Betsy to have started with us than to have 60 hours of budget hearings and the subsequent deliberations within her first 30 days. I want to acknowledge that this work hasn't happened without all of our vice presidents, our deans, our chancellors, and most especially the unit area finance officers who have been tasked with doing all of this work. With your support across this year and with a lot of educational opportunities that we've had with the regents, we started this budget development process knowing that we were going to come to you at the conclusion of the year, bringing forward a system-wide all-funds university budget for your approval for the first time. This is a significant change in how the university has considered its financial position and it's required a lot of deep and thoughtful work from our units, especially at a time when we all have less dollars to spend, but we also have less time available as well. But that said, I want to emphasize this is a process and over time it'll continue to evolve and refine, but our commitment remains to provide clear and accurate and transparent financial information that informs our strategic planning. And with that, I want to turn it over to President Cantwell to talk about the strategic pillar framework that she unveiled for the Advisory Council Summit yesterday. Kyle, can you move forward?
Thank you, Leslie. And I'll just go through this quickly. Just to, the purpose of presenting this here is to let everyone know that because we are making strategic choices in what we cut and where we actually add funds to, and you'll hear about all of this from CFO Brunelli going forward, there is a strategic framework. I use the framework word very consciously. This is not a strategic plan, certainly not at this point. And as you have heard me discuss in the past, we will be using the strategic framework construct in order to build out action plans over the years as we go forward. This budget process is the beginning of what an action plan looks like in the constrained environment that we have. I will also add that as we go through all of this and then get to the end, you will hear at that point about what our plans are for communicating, what our plans are for delivering information to our community, et cetera. So I'm not going to address that here, but it will be addressed at some level at the end of this presentation. So a reminder, these are strategic pillars, if you will, for how we will be decision-making, both in this budget cycle and going forward for the next few years. Access and student success clearly top priority for us. Academic excellence is also top priority and we need to modernize and we need to modernize quickly. Innovation and use-inspired research. Use-inspired is a term some of you, I hope, have heard, but perhaps not everybody, which is really the land grant mission, meaning we do all, we do the most basic of research to applied research. It is all inspired by the land grant mission to deliver value to our communities, to our students, to our faculty, to our state and to the nation. System-wide integration and institutional agility. We got some really good comments yesterday on this is really how are we speeding up our pace so that we can keep track with changes that are occurring around us and not be out of the position where we are making decisions ourselves for our own future. And system-wide integration comes back to the system perspective of how are we a system? And how are we optimizing our capacity to deliver value across the system, recognizing that each of our campuses has some unique value propositions to the communities that they serve? Human and community well-being really addresses both the core of the original land grant mission and the fact that we have a health sciences campus, which is really constituted to deliver value to Eastern Washington and the components of the state of Washington that were not receiving medical and healthcare and community well-being value from other institutions. That is also our land grant mission. And finally, elevating the Cougar identity and brand, not just for brand value, if you will, in a monetary sense, but the Cougar brand, the Cougar identity is so important to so many people in Washington and we really need to value that kind of in our hearts and make sure that we're doing right by that identity and that brand. So I'll leave it there, Leslie, but we wanted to give you a framework associated with, really at the top level, how we are making decisions about moving forward.
Thank you, President Cantwell. Can you, Kyle, can you, thank you. So this is our estimated all-funds budget for fiscal '26. And if you've been paying attention to it for the last 12 months, this might look very, very familiar to the fiscal '25 budget. Frankly, it takes very large dollars to make a shift in this. There's a lot of space between 1.3 billion and 1.4 billion or even 1.2 billion going the other way. So these percentages are the same as they have been presented to you for fiscal '25, although many of our revenue sources are under threat. It was nice to be able to follow both Glenda and Kim earlier today as they talked about the challenges to the state budget should the federal budget make significant changes that lead to reduced appropriations and also to hear from Kim about the constraints on federal grants and on our indirect cost recoveries. For right now, these are still solid and we will hope that they remain so for the balance of the year. I do want to point out that one change we made this year to highlight the indirect cost recovery, the facilities and administrative costs down there at the bottom, the lighter blue wedge that's 3%. Last year, we combined that with the federal grants and contracts and just talked about IDC as being part of that and being available for operations. We wanted to separate this year so we can really watch the change and that should, we start to see pressure on that. I'm going to move forward, please, Kyle. As we look at the core funds budget, this is the university's operating budget and it is roughly one-half of the 1.3 billion. And this is really where we meet our instruction and our basic mission to the state of Washington. The revenue sources here primarily are the state appropriations, our students' net tuition and fees, interest income and some fees that we charge each other, and then the indirect cost recoveries. Every one of these resources are considerably under threat for this year. You heard from Glenda the amount of the state appropriation reduction that we took as part of the state's new budget. While it is 1.5%, I will point out that the other items that she indicated on her slide have an effect on us as well. The change in the fund split significantly impacts how we do our business and our operations. That change from what was 66, 34, 66 provided by the state, 34 provided by the institution, has reverted back to 55, 45. The expectation the state has with that change is that we have tuition dollars available to fill in that gap. That would be okay had our enrollment stayed consistent with what it had been in the prior years, but we have experienced an enrollment downturn. So our new tuition dollars cannot be used for that, so we have to reallocate from inside our pool. That also ignores the fact that we have other inflationary pressures as any entity would, and that includes things like utilities or our technology contracts or any other good or service that we purchase is certainly having an inflationary impact. So I cannot underestimate the reality that while a 1.5% budget reduction is possibly less than what we had considered could be happening to us for this year, it still has a tremendous effect on the university's budget. For tuition and fees, while we have a 3.3% tuition increase effective with this fall, we are not making a change to our expectation for tuition revenue. Hopefully, we will see an increase come August. The reality is if you spoke with all of our enrollment folks around the university system right now, they are all hopeful that they will see improvement in those numbers. We simply don't know what happens until students show up in August and make payment on their bills. We call this the summer melt. It's real. We think people are coming. We have contracts for housing, for instance, in Pullman, but we have to understand who really shows up. A challenge to that could be any changes that the Department of Education is making with our ability for our students to receive their federal financial aid. So that is one that we will watch very, very closely. I'm hopeful, and I think we all are, that we will see a surprise to the upside and there will be some new tuition dollars, but we have not budgeted any. On the indirect cost recovery, you've heard from Kim. Right now, we are holding that constant and that may be a little bit dangerous. We debated this throughout budget deliberations, whether we should start bringing that number down. And you saw Kim's modeling of everything from a 5% reduction to a 50% reduction what will happen. The good news is it will not happen overnight. The grants that we already have in place will take time to be spent out. The real question will be whether or not our faculty are successful in new grant opportunities and frankly, whether or not the percentage changes from our negotiated 53% down to 15 or even less. Then our interest income is also under stress. We do expect that interest rates will be reducing over time, that the interest income is coming from the dollars that we have in our bank account with the interest rates reducing, but also our dollars reducing. We know that we are using some of our dollars that are carryforward right now, so that will bring down our balances. Remember, we've talked a lot about carryforward. That is the university's working capital, so we have brought the interest income down. Kyle, can you move forward for me? This slide illustrates how we brought the university's budget into balance and it does start with that estimated net tuition at the top where we are reflecting no change. The next item is the state appropriation reduction for the recurring funds. You heard Glenda speak to a higher number. That does include some one-time funding that we lost, most particularly were the funds that we had this current year for our graduate student contract. We had $2 million available to fund that for fiscal '25 and those dollars were not re-appropriated. I did want to show on here the increase in state funding for compensation though, because it's important to know that even though they changed the funding split, dollars do come in for that. So we will receive roughly 6.4 million for new compensation. You will see down below the line, that goes right back out for those compensation, but I did want to show that while state appropriations are going down, they do go up somewhat to accommodate a portion of that. The indirect cost recovery, again, we have not made a change yet, but that is a line that we'll be watching very closely as we move throughout the year. Our intent is to utilize some of the dollars that are available for reserves for FNA. There are specifically FNA reserves set aside to bridge to the point where we have to make changes if we see a significant reduction. For now, we have taken interest income down about $750,000. Then you can see the big significant portion in the middle. You know that when we started our budget deliberations with our units, we asked each unit to come forward with scenarios for 1%, 3%, 5% and 10% reductions. To the side of this slide, you see what that would have been impactful from 4.1 million all the way up to 41 million had each unit had a 10% reduction. To close the budget and to balance the core funds budget, we have made reductions of 17.1 million. That is 4.1% of the amount of the base that can be reduced. Not every dollar in the base is subject to reduction. There are some things that have to be preserved, particularly things like state provisos that are spent for those particular things. So we will make adjustments to core funds budgets totaling 17.1 million. Unit reductions are not across the board, not anywhere close. In this deliberation cycle, there are units that range from 0% to 10%. There are also a handful of units that have been reorganized or dissolved. You are well aware that last week, the president made the announcement that the Pullman Chancellor's office has been dissolved, that unit no longer exists. There will be a loss of personnel from this. Right now, I'm not comfortable quantifying a number because frankly, we are not certain of the number until the units receive back their individual cuts and have the opportunity to revisit their budget planning documents. We are requiring that after today, units have 30 days by July the 11th, they'll return to us a 30-day plan that shows what the cut will be and when it will be affected. In terms of personnel, this will require a lot of coordination with our Human Resource Services Office to look through plans for employees as each employee type has a different amount of notice period.
Well, Leslie, could I add something?
Absolutely.
The point of the regents too, that the purpose of creating a 30-day period where our leaders give us the details of how they're going to implement the cuts they've received, but both importantly gives our leaders the authority and the responsibility for managing that within their units and gives them some time to, they've already told us what they think they would do, but gives them some time to put to paper what they're actually going to do. And finally, that means that at that point, we will have plans for each leader that we will hold them responsible for.
And that's also recognition, you know, the units did come forward with plans clearly, but things change between the time that they made that plan and where we are today. So this will solidify that information. There are six units that did not receive a reduction this year. You may recall in the prior year, there was one, that was Enrollment Management. This year, we did, we held harmless from reductions, the College of Arts and Sciences, the Elsens Floyd College of Medicine, the libraries, External Affairs and Government Relations, Research and Law Enforcement. Research will be interesting because that budget is primarily led by FNA, so we will be watching that because that will have an impact on the budget for that office. The College of Arts and Sciences has experienced significant reductions over time. As you know, that is the credit hour generator for all of our general education requirements. We've spent much time speaking about the College of Medicine with the subcommittee led by Regent Pika. You hear often from External Affairs and Government Relations, our ability to be able to find new dollars for the university and of course, the libraries, which underlies all of our academic component. Our law enforcement office was held harmless from this level of reduction and we are actually investing in a new police officer for the Pullman Police Force. Several years ago, with the start of the budget reductions from COVID, we converted a police officer position to be a Clary Coordinator. We have one Clary report from across the system. That was a great decision at the time. However, we need both a Clary Coordinator and this officer to be added back. Our funding priorities for this year include making the graduate student contract whole again. We have utility needs across the system. We are required to fund the state funding split shortfalls, that's that impact of the funding split. We have to fill in the gap there. There are several compliance and risk initiatives that we are funding, including moving our cyber insurance coverage from one-time support to recurring support, making the balance needed for the Attorney General's Office. That's a shared allocation from the state. They bill us for those services, so we have to fill in the funding shortfall there. We are adding some additional property insurance. I think we've spoken several times about our work that was underway under Charles Camerizel's direction, along with Olivia Yang, to look at every facility that the university owns and determine whether it has the appropriate level of facility coverage or contents coverage. And with that work, we will be adding some insurance to ensure that we have our revenue streams protected. And then finally, this is the addition of the law enforcement officer. Faculty salaries are a priority. We have tenure and promotions. Faculty salaries are a priority. We have tenure and promotions specifically listed here. That has always been an item that has been funded each year, but it has not been explicitly so where you could see that. But we are also adding a Presidential Excellence Fund, and I'd love for Provost Riley Tillman to speak to the creation of that.
Yeah, we're shifting how we go about the raise process. We'll talk a little bit about our approach to the 1.4% pool. We did analysis in the Provost Office this year, and somewhere in the range of about a half a million to $750,000 a year is spent in in-year raise requests. Discussing with deans and with chairs, I think there's some concerns that those are not necessarily the most equitably focused. It's more focused on who is talking at a particular time or requesting at a particular time. We also have a habit of doing retention requests in, early in a cycle before there's an actual offer. So we're going to shift our approach, and we're not going to do those throughout the year, and instead create a pool of money this year, 500,000, so that we can distribute with some additional monies that we'll discuss when we look at the raise period across colleges and campuses and give an opportunity for a really equitable approach utilizing the mechanisms related to merit that we have. So I think this is a real change in how we've approached. We'll discuss it a little bit with merit-based raises rather than flat raises, which we're going to start to go into. But it really gives us an opportunity at the unit level to reinforce the faculty who are the most productive and make sure that we are keeping up as much as possible with our limited funds.
And last on this slide, I want to call your attention to the final item, a contingency that's 5% of the recurring budget change totaling just over 700,000. Those dollars, the university does not carry a contingency and has not in the past. We are putting that in in place should there be changes to any of the revenue items, whether it be enrollment, the state, FNA, or the interest income. That is a small portion of starting to be able to mitigate that until we get to the next budget cycle. I really want to point out, and I skipped right over it on this slide, there's a number here, recurring request approved from fiscal '25 that has a zero. That is really an important concept to call out because what I want to emphasize there is throughout the 2025 fiscal year, we did not make any early commitments before going through the budget development cycle. We did not hear anything that we said, yes, we will fund that. Every item that would come forward to us for funding from any of our units, whether it be an administrative unit, a college, or a campus in a one-off way, sounds like the best thing that we should ever possibly do. We had the discipline this year to hold all of our budget deliberations to one time to be able to say we will look at everything together and then make difficult decisions about that. That doesn't necessarily happen every year, but I think it was really important in a year of a presidential transition to be very thoughtful about not making early commitments before we went into the budget cycle. Kyle, can you move forward for me? This slide shows you where the dollars will go, and you can compare it to last year, but there are a lot of little caveats that have to be mentioned. The colleges are the same as they were in the prior year. That is our 10 academic units, the seven that reside in Pullman and the three that reside at our Spokane campus, and that is their core funds budget. The campuses, though, the 13.9% at the bottom is a change this year because it no longer includes a separate Pullman Campus Chancellor. Some of those operations have been shifted under the Provost Office. That includes our Student Affairs. But one portion of that is also shifted to Administration under the President's Office, and that includes Special Events. So we're not going to be comparing the same administrative structure to the prior year. There'll be a little bit of a shift. And the academic support, this also reflects the shift from Research out from the Provost over to Administration. So that office has been moved. The relative percentages are similar, though, for this year. We have made one change in how we show Finance and Operations, though. You'll see that pie is split. A portion of that, the 18.6, is the group of offices that are under my direction, includes largely facilities, but all of the financial operation, risk management, human resources, and IT. But there is a portion of that that is central and allocated. That last year was merged inside of Finance and Operations. That includes dollars that get allocated out throughout the year. At this point of the year, it includes a portion of the FNA that will end up in the colleges and the campuses as those dollars are realized. It also includes some of our university debt service, which is paid over the year, and then it also has a handful of enrollment deals that are one-offs, where we have made arrangements for dollars to go to the units based on enrollment activity. For the most part, we have eliminated those deals this year with the inclusion of rolling our enrollment-based budget back into the base of the unit level under the Provost's direction. But there will still be a handful of deals, like the Bremerton is an example, that still resides there. Kyle, can you move forward? The reductions as a percentage of the reduction base, you will see each of those broken down by division. The Colleges, Campuses, Academic Support, the Provost, Administration under the President, and then Finance and Operations. The recurring reductions, again, total 17,411,000 across all entities, but it varies from a 2.9% average reduction for the Colleges to 8.3% at the campus level. As we indicated, there are two of the Colleges that had a 0% reduction, which brings that number down. The larger reduction at the campuses is based on several factors, including some work that we have underway to determine what the campus pro-rata share of central expenses are. This is work that we've been engaged with over a year now, trying to determine what is the fair appropriation of our centralized costs to the campus structure. Some of those are very easy to resolve. We have one system president, one Board of Regents, one Attorney General's Office. On the finance side, there is one controller, one verser, one payroll. There are some nuances, though, and some challenges with how we allocate things like the Provost Office. There is clearly one Provost, but there is discussion over, is the Provost serving the Pullman Campus or is serving the system, and is it an equal service there? Going through these discussions with our Chancellors, we have more work to do to determine what is a central cost, but also what is the appropriate allocation factor to consider how we would approve, push that out to the campuses. Currently, two of our campuses, our Vancouver Campus and our Tri-Cities Campus, have a tuition split where 89% of the tuition is retained at the campus level, with 11% intended to cover the central share of the costs. We compare that very similarly to how we treat our auxiliary enterprises. Our Housing and Dining pays a similar percentage for their overhead. The challenge is that our campuses are not really auxiliary units. They are integral to the operation of the instructional mission of this institution. So we need to consider, is 11% appropriate, or what is that a percentage that is appropriate? The university has also been reducing our budget since COVID, with recurring cuts in 2023, 2024, and 2025, and now for 2026. Our information shows that the cumulative reduction at our campuses has been less than our pooled campuses. So our Pullman Campus, our Spokane Campus, or even our Everett Campus and our Global Campus have a higher percentage reduction than do our Tri-Cities and Vancouver campuses. Regent Dickinson, I see your hand up.
So Leslie, I'm just, from a campus standpoint, is it an accurate statement to say that although our individual campuses do a very good job of funding a large portion of their functionality, they are not self-funded? Is that a fair or accurate statement?
I think that is a fair and accurate statement, and I do think, I will caveat that in one way, though. I think we owe ourselves the work to determine what is a central cost. Because some things are very obvious, that is a central cost. Some things require a lot of discussion and an agreement on what really is the centralized portion of that.
Thank you.
I'm curious if President Campbell, if you have any comment to make to that. This came up yesterday in the Advisory Council, and I think your answer to that was fantastic.
It hasn't been data-driven in this conversation, Marty, and that's really the challenge. Even the statement that you just made, really, in my world, should be informed 100% by data. How much of the total cost for each campus is borne by their tuitions and other revenues that they bring in specifically to that campus versus is borne in some other way? And some significant percentage of that other way is central services, if you will, which is probably the best answer to what Leslie has brought up is that I think all of you know, we will start in the, and we're already starting, but the campuses will see in the August to September timeframe the beginning of a design process that really looks at everything from what is the functionality needed at each campus to serve the region in which it resides and the students that go there to neck down at the end of that probably year-long process to what is the funding model for each campus that will work? And in that process, we'll get to where Leslie is really talking about. These are not, I think, hard discussions. They have just not occurred. We have not been data-driven about how our system either distributes funding centrally funds, et cetera. Right now, and I say this because it's challenging. When we look at the analysis that Leslie's team has done over the last eight weeks, it really does appear that we are, we have some perverse uses of funds all over the place, meaning we may have tuition funds from one campus funding something that isn't on that campus, and that's not appropriate for our students. We may have distributed models in some places where campuses are funding something like HR and non-distributed models in others, and we really need to ask ourselves how that works. But the first perspective, and the reason I bring this up, has to be what is the function that each campus needs to serve to meet the mission for WSU in that location? And we will do that. It'll take about a year.
If I could add one thing, I think there are aspects of this conversation that we are going to move into and have a clearer understanding on the exact data. One thing that we did do was look at the specific data on the cut histories over the past three to four years and where have the majority of those been, not just in terms of raw dollars, but in terms of the percentage. And so that does give us a feel for where we have been balancing our budget in these difficult times and who's taken the largest hits on those. I'm going to use Arts and Science as the example here. You know, Arts and Sciences has been upwards of a 7%, 8% cut over the past three years. In addition, if you look at enrollment-based budgeting, which was an aspect that we historically had, they had lost almost 10% of their budget, which was in that space. And so you're looking at a college that had cuts in the 13%, 14% range when everything is put together. If we looked at similar analysis of the Tri-Cities and the Vancouver campuses, those numbers were in the 0% to 2% range. And so we do know with actual data, the cut history has been far more focused on the Colleges and frankly, more on the Pullman flagship campus than it has been on the other campuses. And so even beyond the issue of whether the 89% is the appropriate central operating fund, the actual pattern is, has been challenging when looking at the flagship campus.
Kyle, can you move forward for me? This slide summarizes a very, very lengthy spreadsheet that we will make available in the budget document, but it includes the core funds baseline. This is not just the amount that is subject to the reduction, and this rebuilds the budget up to what the units will see when they open the adaptive planning tool to do their actual work. So we have the fiscal '25 core funds baseline as we end this fiscal year, the recurring reduction that will be applied, and then we start adding in dollars that have either been held centrally or intended to be allocated as one time. The recurring graduate assistant central funds are pushed out, that $2.6 million, based on where we know the graduate students are in this current year. The next column includes the recurring state budget and other central allocation. This includes all of our proviso funding that is specific to the unit level and also previous commitments that have been made from prior budget years. The next column is the allocations, including benefits in our FNA. When we push that out to the units based on their actual use, benefits is by far the largest item in this. While benefits are recurring, we do manage that from a central pool and move that out into the units based on positions each year. And all this together sums up to our $661.3 billion university budget. Kyle, will you move forward for me? I do need to touch on our compensation items as those are impactful in our budget this year, and each of our employee types has different increases based on that employee type. Our classified and civil service increase is determined by the state. It becomes effective on July 1 for those individuals. That is a 3% increase. Our graduate students are our associative student-employee contract. Their increase is effective on October 1, 2025, and that is also a 3% increase as determined by their contract. Our faculty and administrative professionals have quite a few nuances. Those increases have been effective on October 1, 2020, will be on 2025 this year, but they have been traditionally on October 1. That allows us to get past the rush of the hiring season for new faculty in the spring, in the fall. There are two changes this year that we are implementing. The first of those is there will be no increase for an employee hired on or after January 1, 2025. We have not had that restriction in place before. In fact, you could be hired simply months before, days before, and your increase would have been effective on that next date. This gives us, particularly on the faculty side, the opportunity for merit to be established for those increases. The other change is that we are not making increases for faculty and administrative professional positions for those earning above $250,000. So those employees will have no increase this year. On the faculty side, Provost Riley Tillman mentioned this. The increases will follow the allocation process outlined in the faculty manual. This is a merit-based opportunity for the faculty. The pool that is available is 1.4%. And for other administrative professionals who are not above $250,000 and have been hired prior to January 1, their increase is 1.4%. Chris, I saw you come off mute.
I was trying to raise my hand, but I couldn't figure out how to do it. So just two or three thoughts here. Number one, this is a real change in our direction. We have not done merit raises for over a decade at the university. This is one of the areas of which I heard significant feedback from faculty senate, from chairs, from deans, from the Association for Women Faculty or Female Faculty. We needed to start focusing on merit-based, both to highly reinforce our most productive faculty members, but also not simply locking in a base raise for faculty members who are less productive or in some instances, more problematic. We are going to follow the faculty manual for the process. I think they've got a nice model. I will say the presidential pool and any of the monies deferred from those two points above, which will be added to that. So for example, the raise around mine or President Kent Wells or Leslie's will be rolled into that pool. That will be treated as a second pool, really giving chairs and deans the opportunity to really focus raises on where they think our most talented individuals and our most important individuals are for both student success and for research. So I'm excited about this change. It's going to be a very big one at the university. We have not done this in, again, a decade, but I think it's going to have a real impact on faculty morale and retention and making sure the right people are getting the raises they deserve.
Finally, before we change from this, oh, if you go back one, thank you, Kyle. I want to point out that the pool available for the administrative professional employees is 1.4%. This is a direct impact of that fund split changing at the state level. When they reduce that back to the 55, 45, the dollars simply do not go as far as they could. If the fund split were higher, we would have more dollars available to allocate in the pool. Now, can you go forward, Kyle? We move after pending your approval today into budget implementation. The notification to units actually is going out this afternoon. We have those notifications ready to go as soon as this meeting concludes. Each unit will be asked to complete a 30-day plan with submission by July the 11th so that we can review the impacts of the budget reductions. There are units that are not being reduced that we will also ask to do a 30-day plan because there are units that we have that are operating within a structural budget deficit that need to close that deficit in this year. Our voluntary early retirement incentive that you just approved, the window opens for that on Monday, and it runs through early July. the window opens for that on Monday and it runs through early July. The next two items are executive policies that will be highly emphasized this year. The first of those is our budget responsibility policy. This one outlines the unit's responsibility, authority, and frankly, accountability for managing their budgets within the budget, not exceeding that. We will be using that to speak with our units throughout the year. Kim Kristin is already starting the work to consider revisions to executive policy too. This is the allocation of the FNA rate, the indirect cost recovery. Should we see pressure on that, we will no doubt have to revisit how the allocation of that is made. The next item, we will be introducing a core funds carryforward surtax in August. These are the dollars that are core funds that have accumulated over time where the, the budget is not used fully in a fiscal year. We have allowed 100% of that to accrue at the unit level. That is unusual in higher ed. I've worked for institutions that sweep 100% of that at the end of the fiscal year, but I've also worked for institutions that allow the unit to retain a portion of that for their strategic needs, but also pull a portion of that back centrally, not only to manage the university's working capital, but to fund initiatives in a significant one-time way. We want to be very thoughtful about the implementation of that. The preliminary work that we've done on that has created a progressive tax that is a percentage, the core funds as a percentage of the unit's budget is taxed more as those dollars accumulate more. So think of it sort of like the IRS tax scale. There is a portion that is not taxed at all, that is to encourage units to have some carryforward, but the more carryforward as a percentage of budget, the more would be pulled back to central. And then finally, this is very important for this year. We will be continuously modeling scenario planning. You saw the great work that Kim had already done in terms of both grants dollars possibly going down, but indirect cost recoveries going down. Should there be pressures on our state allocation with changes in the federal budget or from our tuition, we will be working to affect those changes. Again, hopefully, we will see a surprise to the upside in terms of our tuition with increased enrollment in the fall across the university system, but we are prepared should that not be the case.
Leslie, if I could just interject here, because I said we would. On the communication side, I think all of you have seen, so I do a weekly change update notice to the entire community, just what's changed between this week and last week and what do we expect to change next week? We've been messaging, this is coming, this, this budget implementation, and we'll start messaging exactly how that's happening, when the 30-day plans come in, what's there. And then we also will have a website which will have information and an answer to frequently asked questions.
Can you go forward for me, Kyle? Before I get to this, I really want to point out that no matter the timing, we, again, our, our process is a little bit delayed. We would hope to have done this, work with you in the month of May to give our units a little bit more time to do their planning before the fiscal year begins. Budget development is always a fire drill. It always feels like there's a lot of things coming together at the last minute. And I have to say, over the last week and even the last 48 hours, a lot of work has been put into this presentation and our development of the, the materials that are going out to the units, including the adaptive planning system. I want to especially thank the communications team, Pam Scott and Holly, who have worked really closely with us, changing things up to the last minute. Always Tracy changing things for me. We had to pull this presentation and re-insert it this morning at, at about 7:30. I really am significantly appreciative of the partnership with the provost office. Special thanks to Chris and Christina. We, we are in each other's business constantly, daily, nightly, every day. Our entire budget office, really all of our finance and administration team, including Jennifer Klein and the human resources staff, you know, with more than 80% of our budget consumed with personnel infringed, the, the impact of planning, both for the increases for the voluntary early retirement program is, is important. Matt Skinner and Chris Jones, who were in every meeting, working with us through multiple iterations and multiple spreadsheets is very important. So I appreciate their work. I also want to point out that even though I didn't have him speak to this, this is Chris Jones' last meeting with us. He will be leaving the university to become the vice president for finance at Lewis and Clark State University, and we certainly appreciate all of his many contributions to this. The reason I pull up this very last slide, though, is to highlight that this is continuous planning for us. As we wrap up the fiscal 25 year, we're completing that this month, and we will move very quickly into a post-close cycle and then the reporting cycle, which will conclude in December with the financial statements, which you will see in January of next year. Fiscal 26 budget implementation starts today upon your approval and continues throughout the year. But just so we don't ever get tired, our fiscal 27 budget development planning starts as early as September as we start to think about what our tuition will be rolling into the next year. So wanted you to have a perspective on the, the fact that three years of budget planning are always underway at any given time. And with that chair shower, that's the conclusion of my remarks, but we're certainly happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Leslie. This was really comprehensive. Regent Ramos, I see you.
Thank you. I am off mute. I just wanted to make a couple of comments here. You know, the, the heavy lift of the entire team has not been reactionary. And I just want to emphasize the point that we've had concurrent planning for actually multiple cycles now. And the fact that, you know, we have tools to allow us to access data in an accurate and timely and honest way for the system is something that, you know, we're all learning how to leverage. And, you know, Workday implementation was several years ago now. So this is not a reactionary process. It's really principle-centered, future-looking, with an ear to all of the input that we get. And so we're also trying to be agile with all the advice, the guidance. I just can't emphasize enough how much work it takes. And I have to applaud our CFO and her entire team, since I get to partner with them almost every week, looking at the details as we, you know, examine the balance sheet, examine income expenses, look at all the auxiliaries, all the pieces that are frankly, moving all the time. And while one challenge could be overwhelming, we really take an eye to what is the holistic content, context and the system effects. It's not just reactive to what's in front of us, but we know that there are secondary and tertiary effects that are happening throughout the entire budget. And it's, I think, important to understand that we've got a large-scale systems thinking mindset here. And want to appreciate President Cantwell as well, knowing that, you know, eight weeks into it, she's already put her arms around this, has articulated the pillars, has been reaching out to, you know, our extensions, to our communities, to all the people that really help us here at Washington State University. And so I just wanted to emphasize the messages that our CFO just shared.
Thank you, Regent Ramos. And thank you for your diligence in meeting very regularly with the finance team. I, I do want to also offer my thanks to our provost, to our CFO and to our president. I will say that Jen and I had a few minutes over the last couple of days where I'm running through again, okay, tell me this again, and let's talk through this. And, and it is really, truly with a heavy heart and butterflies in my stomach that I think that we have all been thinking about the impact of this budget and the changes at a federal level that will impact our students, our faculty, our community. And we do not take this process lightly. I will say that I have been surprised the board hasn't holistically approved a budget before. This is a historic and an important moment, and it is one that we have taken very seriously and put a very thoughtful and intentional process forward, where not only are we learning, but in an open and transparent way, we are providing the opportunity for others to learn with us, the details that all make up the different portions of the budget that we may look at, how they all come together. And that is one of the most important roles as a board. So I just really want to, to share how I have felt this process has gone this year, how important it is, how we couldn't have done something very quickly. And yet we are in the process of having to do something really hard, and it has not been, as Jen said, without very clearly listening and trying to understand if there are any other levers that we have. We are in a new day, and we specifically selected President Cantwell, who is a bold, agile leader, future-focused. And we need, as a WSU community, to be moving forward together. And so I really appreciate your leadership, President Cantwell. You jumped in, and we have really, really been looking forward to our ability to move in a direction. And I think what you've also seen is what we're hoping to, to have strategic pillars that are where we together look at where we're headed and a budget that matches those strategic imperatives. Not a budget that then is forecasting our strategy, but that together, this is an integrated, comprehensive approach. So with that, I just want to open it up. We, we do need to take action. And before we head into a motion, are there other comments or other questions? Yeah. Regent McDonald?
I just want to take a minute to scold Chris for leaving us and to thank him for the amazing service. And I really appreciated that you were a person that I could ask to show up in your office and ask a lot of questions, and you would patiently answer them all. And so I just don't want to let this meeting go by without saying thank you for all that you've done for us. And you really shouldn't leave us.
Thank you, Regent McDonald. It's been an honor to serve everyone. Appreciate it.
Maybe if I could just add, because Chris is leaving and I'm really sad as well, you know, we have tested the system and tested the data through third-party auditors. And just going back over the year, we have verified the integrity of the data, not by ourselves, but with others. And so we rely and trust in our people and our systems and our processes, and where we need to adjust, we do. And I just wanted to remind everybody of that as well.
If you don't mind, Chris, congratulations for your new opportunity.
Thank you, Regent Blankenship. Appreciate that.
Regent Ramos, are we ready to take motion?
Sure. I move that the Board of Regents approve the fiscal year 2026 university operating budget and delegate authority to the president or designate to implement the budget and make adjustments throughout the fiscal year as needed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Regent Pika. Any other questions, comments, or discussion?
Just, Leslie, could you please describe the operating budget document, where that's and how that's going to be made available to the public since it's 200 pages of work or something like that?
It is about 200 pages. You're correct. And I should have had that on our implementation slide. So that document will go into production. Our intent was to have it available by June 30 to start the fiscal year. Unfortunately, with Chris Jones' departure, we are probably going to be a little bit delayed in that. I anticipate we'll be able to push the document out to the web by mid July.
Okay.
My only comment, Madam Chair, would be this is a remarkable amount of work, and the presentation was phenomenal. And I appreciate being briefed the whole way through. But in spite of our challenges, with this team that we've worked with, we're very optimistic. We can have a good life path.
Thank you, Regent Blankenship. Okay, I am going to go ahead and ask for the vote on the 2026 university operating budget. So all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Like to go ahead and move forward by asking that John Harlow and Anne McCoy join Leslie again. I wish to make sure that it is noted for the record that the next two items are being presented as action items rather than future action items in accordance with the Board of Regents by law 212(c). The first is the fiscal year 2026 Cougar Athletics budget approve, approval, excuse me, and then the fiscal year 2025 Cougar Athletics budget transfer. So it seems like these go together. So I'll go ahead and ask Leslie, Anne, and John.
Thank you again, Regent Shower. I'm actually going to defer to Anne to start.
Yeah, thank you, Leslie. John will go through a lot of our financial data, as always, in kind of a summary that he has prepared. But I'd just like to say, obviously, I mean, we've been doing a lot of, you know, kind of evaluation and planning over this past year, certainly, not only in response to the changes with the PAC 12, but college athletics overall, you know, but obviously trying to navigate these changes, understanding the university itself is going through a lot of reflection and a lot of hard decisions. And so, you know, I think we kept that in mind when we presented or put together this budget for presentation and consideration today. And, you know, I would, I would argue that it certainly is a starting point for us, but we, we need to continue to grow as a department to do all the things that we're capable of. So, John?
Thanks, Anne. Thank you, Leslie. Sharing my screen again. Just want to make sure that everyone can, can see that. Awesome. And I'm, again, I'm aware, now I'm 0 for 2 on hitting my time, my time allotment. So I'm pretty sure the rule is to go for three, you get benched. So I'll make sure I, I do my best here. As Anne mentioned, FY26 will see significant changes in college athletics. We're heading into, it's not signed yet, but hopefully, and we anticipate it will be signed, a post-house settlement NCAA, which radically changes the model that so many of us have grown accustomed to. So with those changes, we're needing to adapt and to pivot and to work within this new framework as well. So as you'd expect, a substantial amount of time and energy has been put into this budget as we reprioritize where we are as a department and try to best position ourselves moving forward to be competitive with the resources we have available and to continue to pursue, relentlessly pursue any new and additional revenues. So we'll start with our revenues, and you'll see a format here that you're somewhat used to seeing in previous meetings, but we have also laid out the, the composition of revenues and how those break down as part of the overall revenue budget. Try to color code those appropriately to match as well. Starting with our conference distribution, obviously, our, our biggest chunk of, of revenue. We've held that number relatively flat from this year to next, based on the projections that we've received from the PAC 12. One thing that we do know, and as we've seen in the past, this number is highly volatile, and it can be a bit of a moving target. So obviously, some of the rebuilding potential has an impact on this number as well. So this is one we'll stay in close communication with the league office and watch closely throughout the year. Moving down to our game-related revenues and to ticket sales, you'll see we're looking for an increase next year compared to this year. We know that this is an area we have to stretch. We have to create more engagement. We're working through various methods to accomplish that, but we know it's an area we need to increase. Sports passes, you'll see an increase there as well. We've held the price flat from this year to next year, but we're working to increase passes sold with a focus on the incoming class, retention of previous cohorts, and really re-establishing some of the upper-class persons as well. Obviously, there is no neutral apple cup at Lumen Field, so that line item goes away. That is our, a home game here on Pullman Campus this year, which is exciting. Donations and annual fund, this is another area we need significant growth. We've budgeted in an achievable number for conservative budget purposes, but that number is not our goal. Our goal number is much, much higher. And again, we have got to increase engagement and generate new donors, new stakeholders. That's priority number one for us this next year, and the income is contingent upon that. You'll see some related increases on the expense side as well to help us, to help us get there. Concessions will be in year two for Airmark. We know and they know that there needs to be significant improvement from year one to year two. No one has been harder on this group than I have. We'll be rolling out some new items this next year, which everyone's excited about. And we're also working on some additional offerings inside the stadium, which will be exciting as well. Our other revenue category, this is the $2 million Our other revenue category, this is the $2 million mark that you see there. This is ticketing fees, parking, merchandising, and some catch-all of some smaller revenues. You notice this is obviously down from our current year. However, however, you'll recall in this current year, we have a lion's share of that number is made up of one-time use funds from buyout revenues that we have from some personnel changes and personnel contracts. So we're reestablishing that to what the normal baseline is from year to year. Down into our next categories here, we don't anticipate much change with the endowment number or the NCAA distribution. So we're holding that flat for now. Royalties and advertising, you'll notice a decrease here. And you'll recall earlier, the partnership with PlayFly that we discussed and asked for approval for. Long term, there is significant upside to what they're doing, to what we're currently doing now. However, I am concerned about year one and the changeover with the current, the contract switching July 30, new contract taking effect July 1, and the kickoff coming August 30. I'm optimistic and convinced that this partnership is going to be an absolute game changer, but we have to get them off the ground and up and running appropriately. Direct institutional support, you'll recall, we started current year FY25 with 2.5 million from the institution. We've received the mid-year investment in the spring semester, which we're grateful for. But we have made that same request this year for that 2 million to be in the budget FY26, and that's reflected here as well. Finally, closing out the revenues, these last categories are all pass-through revenues that are tied directly to an expense. So there's no budgetary impact there with these. So we're looking at 74.4 million in available revenues and projected resources for use in FY26. I'll move down to our expenses. Again, a similar layout here, starting with scholarships. As I mentioned earlier, with the changes into a post-house settlement in the NCAA, there will be roster limits, but increases to scholarship opportunities. So what we've done here in this line item, we've tried to take into account a tuition increase and a small incremental amount of increased scholarship opportunities for student athletes. What we've done with our coaches, we've taken a what we're calling a benefits budget approach with this. So if anyone's seen the moving money ball, the similar ideal ideology of that. Our coaches and programs each get a pool of money. They get to decide how to best use it for their program, if that's a full scholarship, if that's a partial scholarship, if that's putting a student athlete on Alston money. It can be if it's state tuition versus out-of-state versus international, all of those have an impact on the amounts. As does academic aid, that can help offset some of those dollars. So that's our approach and you'll see a little bit of an increase there from current year to next year. Compensation is obviously our largest area of investment. You'll see a decrease from current year to next year. We have had several changes throughout this year that we won't see the full effect on until the full year of FY26. However, we're going to need to adjust some of our resources and human capital accordingly towards our new NCAA environment with a heavy focus on revenue generation. Our debt service will go down next year as we completed our obligation for the baseball facility in FY25. And then down to our sports programs area, this is where the majority of our front-facing, day-to-day student athlete competition-related sources come from. We based next year's budget off of current year where we landed, putting in some cost control adjustments, but also understand we have three East Coast trips this next season for football. It will be in year two of our partnership with Pullman Regional Hospital, which we're excited about. And then you'll take notice of an increase in investment in student athlete meals. This is an area we know is important. Our nutrition group does an incredible job with the resources they're given, but we have to do more. We know this has a direct impact on the student athletes' experience, their mental health, their physical health, health, their performance, and their recovery. It also dictates their performance or helps dictate their performance on the field as well as in the classroom. So this is an area we've prioritized for investment, I think, into next year. Our admin and overhead expense, this is our IT costs, our insurance, band support, and some of our other overhead areas. We've held this flat, but I do believe with some of our adjustments, this is an area we could have some some savings to shift from elsewhere. But as we finalize some plans for the fall, we haven't yet moved those dollars. Our guarantee expense, we built an entirely independent football schedule in an incredibly short timeframe for this next year, which is actually nothing short of a miracle, to be honest. But with that, we're bringing in some guarantees, we're paying out some guarantees. The net effect of that is $2 million. Fundraising, marketing, and engagement. Again, this is another area we have to invest. We made incremental adjustments during the current year, and those have to increase as we head towards the fall. You'll see a Maid of Crimson campaign rolling out in the next few weeks. Those elements have a cost, but we realize you have to spend a little bit of money to make some money as well. We have to spend in places that will generate a return in re-engagement. Historically, our creative teams have been focused on updates and information, and we're switching that mindset to focus on brand enhancement, engagement, and storytelling. Our other expenses, these are areas like facility maintenance and custodial, all other non-game-related team expenses, strength and conditioning, ticketing fees, taxes, et cetera, a catch-all for some some smaller items. So finally, just as we had the pass-through revenues on the revenue side, this final category here in the dark blue, you'll see those are offsetting expenses tied to those revenues. So again, no budgetary impact on the ins and outs of those. In summary on expenses, we're looking to utilize the full amount of projected resources. We need to make investments where we think most benefit our student athletes and in places where we can increase fan engagement and the game day atmosphere with an understanding we need to be within our means and the resources we have available. So in closing on 26, again, a significant amount of change is coming, and there will be continuous changes for all schools and conferences as they navigate this new national landscape, but putting an emphasis on stewardship with the resources that we have. Happy to take any questions on 26. I know, Leslie or 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 Chair Shower, if we want to vote here or wait until 25. Either way, happy to field questions here.
Leslie, Regent Ramos, do you have any input on whether you want to keep going or we stop and move move forward with action?
I I think that 26 and the 25 transfers are different enough that maybe we have the discussion and and the action here and then move to the transfer.
Okay, thanks, Leslie. Questions, comments, feedback?
Maybe, Leslie, could you comment on the Oversight Committee's role in terms of monitoring performance to plan so that we know we have reliable forecasts and numbers in front of us? Just to go over that.
Thank you. That that's really important. And, you know, it just occurred to me that with you stepping into the chair role, we might need somebody else to chair this committee. But Regent Ramos has chaired this since it started. And I'll remind everyone, the committee that we're referring to, the Athletic Oversight Committee, started in June of 2023, and that timing is is not an accident. So that was before the PAC 12 fell apart in August of 2023. You will remember that there was a budget overrun in the 2023 fiscal year that had to be resolved with a lot of changes. And that was how John Harlow actually moved from treasury back into the athletic space. That was intended to provide you and with me as the university CFO with the the confidence and understanding that athletics was able to utilize their their budget in a way that was appropriate and they were not going to overspend in any way. And I think that the committee has been very successful in having these routine check-ins and monitoring, not just at the time of the Regents' meetings, but seeing on a monthly basis from John what the budget to actual is and what the projection looks like going forward. Because this space has been certainly dynamic over the last two years, certainly with the PAC 12. But then even with changes that have occurred since the PAC 12 started to rebuild last year. So the committee has served that purpose. I think sometimes we get a little bit confused that this committee is advising on the future of the PAC 12. And that really was not the intent of the subcommittee. It was really to manage and hold accountable the athletics organization for its budget parameters.
Thank you.
Just to follow up, and then I also see Regent Dickinson has her hand raised. Leslie, the makeup of that committee includes not just Regent Ramos, but a member of the faculty as well. So I think this is really important. You know, we have lots of transitions in leadership. This was the transition between Regent Dickinson as the chair who put this in place. And then I stepped in as the chair in July. When I stepped in in July, Regent Ramos also stepped in as the chair of the finance. So it made sense for Regent Ramos to chair the finance committee and then also chair this new committee. The amount of committees Regent Ramos has chaired or participated in will have a significant ripple effect as she changes roles. And we'll be looking to the rest of the members of the board to look at filling some of these these roles, including this really important one, the Athletics Budget Oversight Committee. Regent Dickinson.
Thanks, Regent Shower. So again, thank you to really Leslie and John and Ann and Jen here. The amount of work that goes into this is remarkable. So I feel compelled to share with the board today that I won't be voting in favor of the 2026 budget for athletics. It'll be the first time that I don't. And it is not a referendum on anything or anyone here. It is or anything that I don't believe is not happening and should be happening. But it is a statement for me to continue to be a voice. And I know I'm being heard by President Cantwell, so I want to acknowledge that. But I just do not believe you can continue to erode and cut one of our single biggest brand assets for going forward, especially when we're going into a new conference. And this is not about grieving the old and wishing we could go backwards. It's about looking forward and how we actually put our best foot forward and be as competitive as we can possibly be. I would like to continue to see, and I don't believe that this is a lack of the university's support of athletics. What I'm looking and stating is I would like to continue to work off the study that we just were able to review today. I think there are things we have not uncovered. I would say, because I've said it many times, University of New Mexico using that study to look to the legislature to perhaps increase athletic fees. I know they're high, but we have got to figure out how we tap every single tool and asset to make a game day weekend experience for our alumni, our donors, our fans. I don't know what that looks like. It's I know people are working on camping opportunities. I know people are considering and looking, how do we use available dorms that we could open for families to come stay? But I just continue to think there are a multi-pronged approach. I believe we have to do a better job and I look forward to our new partners really coming in and helping us tell our story with PlayFly because Cougar Nation needs to step up here. I think we need a much more coordinated approach with our foundation in that what is it going to take for WSU athletics to be able to raise ongoing sustainable $10 to $15 million to get us back to a level that's competitive and can allow us to show up and be at the table in a very competitive way? And then, quite frankly, Ann, the onus then falls on you because President Cantwell has said this many times too. We have to win, so we need to provide a product. And I don't think you can keep cutting to be able to provide a superior product. But then we have to provide an outcome and a value around winning. And, you know, and I have confidence in our coaches and our coaching staff around that. I also think we've got to, and again, I appreciated hearing this today, the corporate sponsorships we tend to tap into are Washingtonian-type sponsorships. I'm not suggesting that anybody isn't trying, but how do we collectively, with the leadership like President Cantwell, with a provost like Provost Riley Tillman, with a CFO like Leslie Brunelli, how do we put a different face forward around how we are going to do things differently and how athletics fits into Washington State University's overall plan? And at the end of the day, you know, athletics and this brand and this national exposure help drive the one thing we can control around costs, and that is tuition. And try to relieve some of that expense or dependency that we consistently are seeing around state and federal dollars. So again, this is not a referendum. It is me just feeling like there is so much more work to be done, but I don't believe that $74 million is the right investment to be able to do the things we're going to need to do. And I don't, I'm not calling on Washington State University's administration to say do more because I believe we're doing a lot. But I am calling on Cougar Nation and I'm calling on leadership for us to truly figure out how are we all going to come together and row this boat the exact same way with an acknowledgement that athletics for sure needs additional dollars and it is worth doubling down on an investment going forward through lots of different strategies and approaches.
Thank you, Regent Dickinson. Other comments? Questions? Yeah, Regent Pika.
John, in your presentation, you had a donation item to Marty's comment. And it sounded, it was pretty conservative and you have to do more, which, you know, I think we would all hope that's possible. And I would just like you or Ann to comment on, especially when you compare capital fundraising to operational fundraising, which is much harder, the latter. Just, I mean, this budget could change if you put a more aggressive number in there. And then, you know, there's a school of thought, then your your time will be spent accordingly. What's possible in that donation line item? I'd like both Ann and John to comment.
I would answer first about the anecdotal piece. One thing structurally, we're centering a lot of our revenue generation efforts. So John will be a lot more involved in the Cougar Athletic Fund as he already is in some of the external marketing areas. But one of the things, quite frankly, we're battling is is that capital fundraising is a building people in most cases for us, that people can wrap their minds around. It's a project, it's done, it's sustainable throughout, you know, some measure of time. And what we're finding with the fundraising and the the support we need most right now for our student-athlete scholarships and student-athlete opportunities is much more emotional for people. So for a lot of our donors, they're very excited to double down and and invest, you know, in that investment in our student-athletes. And for others, quite frankly, it's very hard for them to wrap their minds around the changes in college athletics and whether it be the transfer portal or NIL or, you know, everything else. But from our perspective, the entree into an education at Washington State University is through an athletic scholarship for our student-athlete population. And so for us to be able to double down on that and raise more money, you know, is incredibly important in addition to continuing to fundraise for, you know, in-stadium elements for game day experience and and a wide variety of things. So I, and I think, quite frankly, a lot of our donors are saying the same things, you know, that I'm hearing the university also saying is that everybody wants a partnership and a coordinated effort and people doing, you know, kind of what they can. So that may be just kind of some surrounding, you know, perspective, I guess, on that. But it's it's been both an exciting but also a bit of an interesting conundrum for us going forward, which is part of the reason we feel we need to be conservative about the estimates. John, I don't know what you'd add, or I see President Cantwell, your hand up, so I don't want to.
Yes, I may just add just a few quick items. The number that we have plugged in there, while it's conservative compared to where our where our goals need to be or are, it is still going to be one of the largest annual funds or the largest annual fund number that we've ever had in here budgetarily. Knowing that we've got to do everything we can to hit that and then exceed that goal, why we didn't pepper in a larger number to be to set ourselves up for failure comes back to why we had, you know, the Budget Oversight Committee established as well. Because historically, we've had practices of let's throw some revenues numbers in there and then then we'll budget, you know, our expenses accordingly to the resources we think we'll have available. And then there there comes a shortfall. We're not in a position to do that budgetarily, set ourselves up for failure to put a number in there. We need to live within our means that we we have now. And then once we see success in the fundraising, we can adjust accordingly and invest in those as well. But we didn't want to prematurely set ourselves up behind the eight ball before we're even out of the gate. And to Ann's point on how we achieve some of those, we've had continuous conversations and President Cantwell has been heavily involved in those as well as how we increase the coordination. It's not just the handful of athletics fundraisers that we have here going out and asking. It's a more coordinated, holistic effort with the university and others asking on how we strategically bring dollars back here. And and the priority has been capital projects for for a number of different years. Our our facilities are in a really, really great shape, thanks to those donors. Now the priorities are different going forward, and that's what we've got to attack.
President Cantwell.
A couple of things to really think about here. One is we we still have not really even come close to overcoming the grief and and the tail of a management structure for the former PAC, the former conference that we were in. I can hear this from everybody, and Ann and John are at the at the pointy end of my spear all the time about shifting your cultural context to a conference that is not going to be any that is not going to be anything like you've seen before. So with great, great respect, Regent Dickinson, I think we can absolutely do what we need to do with the money we have. Now, it's not everything that we would want to do, but we can do what we need to do. But we have to really rethink a lot of things. And to John's point, for example, we are, we have remarkable athletics infrastructure, remarkable. It places us at the top tier of capability per our infrastructure in the rebuilt PAC 12. But it does not, but it costs more than anybody else pays for their infrastructure. And I'm talking about ongoing debt. I'm talking about what it costs to, you know, basically manage all of that infrastructure. So we are in this really interesting position where we have been built out for a P4 or P5 type of conference. We are going to have to think, and you've all heard me say this, and again, Anne and John are highly aware of this focus, that, that doing all of the above is not actually the winning algorithm for winning in the PAC 12. And you are absolutely right, Regent Dickinson. We must win. Why? Because in five years, there will be yet another realignment. That is our last chance. We have to be at the very top in football and basketball and probably women's basketball. We have to be at the top. And we have to align our resources to do that. And all of the things that Anne says about, says about serving the student-athlete, those can't go away either. But we have had a very rich tradition of many sports. We have, if you do a comparative study, and I don't have all the numbers, but I certainly know from my former institution, look, these guys are coming in scrappy. They're going to beat our butts if we don't get scrappy and stop worrying about like, oh, you know, we don't have this and we don't have that. We have got to be like the kids in the dirt lot who are going to go play baseball with the pros. We've got to be really, really good. But just in terms of the number of student-athletes, and Anne, you might even know this. I don't know if you know the comparator with the incoming Mountain West schools, but typically, we have many more student-athlete scholarships than our incoming. Why? Because they came up from, this is all they could afford, and we are coming down from, we can afford this. Now what can we afford to win? Partners like PlayFly are going to make a real difference for us. But I would really invite everyone to work with John and Anne, not on how do we just get more money? Because more money in the current model isn't going to get us where we need to go. We are really level-setting, and these guys are working really hard, level-setting around how do we actually drive a different culture and a different model for how we do this at WSU? And all of that preserves the brand. All of that allows the athletics brand to, to drive everything else that happens at the university. And I'll go back to winning, because every winning football game drives enrollment. Every winning football game drives donors. Every winning football, and whether we like it or not, doesn't mean we're not going to do the other, all the other vital aspects of a college athletics program. But we have to do what we, what will, what will allow us to win in the new conference. And I think that's unfolding. I know Anna's, you know, and I are looking at this really closely. John is down in the weeds on a lot of what the other, what the incoming teams are doing. We're reorienting to an entirely new conference. So I do think transforming our fundraising approach is absolutely necessary and probably job one. Anne has heard me say a number of times, I need us to find $30 million a year of new donor funding. Now, I've done that before, so this is not rocket science. This is totally achievable. It does take a complete transformation in how we have approached athletics fundraising. And that means, you know, mixing up athletics and the foundation in different ways. It means I might be the prime fundraiser for these kinds of things. It means we are really looking at just a whole different paradigm for how we do that. And, and everything I'm saying points to something that, that, that Regent Dickinson really pointed out is that that, that narrative, that story has to be incredibly strong about where we are going and how we are getting there. So I appreciate the opportunity to get out of soapbox for a minute.
Thank you, President Cantwell. I think we're going to all need to say yes to helping to lift our athletics program, not only from stories, but also from a financial investment. And we all know how important our athletics program is for our brand awareness. It is driving student enrollment, which drives our ability to continue to compete for research and for resources that improve our national rankings and allow us to really be Washington's university. So I am just going to pause to see if Regent Ramos, you feel like we're ready to move forward with a motion?
I think we're ready. I will just say, though, to Regent Dickinson, thank you for all of that context. We have many challenges here, and the challenges affect each other throughout the enterprise. So thank you for your courage and your passion around athletics. With that, you know, we have to move forward, and we know there's more upside opportunity even as we manage the risks here. So the leaders have presented us with a budget. And with that, I move that the Board of Regents approve the fiscal year 2026 athletics budget.
My second.
Thank you, Regent Serna. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. The motion passes. I appreciate all of the conversations and the comments. And let's move forward with the second item, which is the fiscal year 2025 Cougar Athletics Budget Transfers.
Thank you, Regent Shower. Share my screen again. We'll just cover a very, very brief update on fiscal year '25 and then discuss the transfer quickly. So just provide a quick update on where we stand for '25, and then again, asking for approval of the year-end transfer to cover the athletics operating deficit as mandated by Revised Code of Washington. So last time I was able to give an update on the current year budget in April, you may recall, we were projecting a balanced budget of $77.1 million in revenues to cover $77.1 million in expenses. Since that time, and as we continue to get closer to year-end, we're still projecting a balanced budget. However, we have seen additional $400,000 in revenue come in. Half of that 400 is from ticket, ticketing fees, and the other half is from an uptick we've seen in royalty revenue from the EA Sports College Football re-release last summer, for any of those that are gamers here on the Zoom. On the other side of the ledger, we've seen expenses increase by $400,000 as well. A portion of those, those ticketing fees on the revenue side are pass-throughs to pay some of our third-party ticket distributors. So those additional revenues came in, they passed through to our third-party seller. And we've also seen an additional amount of settlements come through for our postseason travel, finishing out the early part of the spring. So again, looking to land flat here as far as resources equalling expenses, but they have changed slightly since the last update. So I segue into our year-end transfer. As you can see the last few years on our slide, a reminder, our operating budget does have a operating deficit that we've been able to hold flat for the last few years dating back to FY '23. And per the Revised Code of Washington, the university cannot close the books with an auxiliary in a fund-balance deficit. So these cash balances are estimated and projected as of the end of April. We have worked with central finance and the Controllers Office as well as the Treasury to check these balances and provide the proper fund types to cover. So our projection this year is based on the $102 million operating deficit, then factoring in the additional revenue that will be remaining with the conference for conference investments, another $10 million. We'll be using $22 million of capital and restricted one-time-use athletics cash to help offset this transfer needed from campus. And then we factored in a $10 million buffer, as we do annually on this, on this transfer, just to account for any issues in timing or receivables that come in after June 30th, just to make sure we don't have to come back for additional approvals based on a timing issue of cash. That brings us to a need of $99.8 million for the transfer. Again, working with central finance, the plan to cover those are to use balances from housing and dining, parking, transportation, and other central non-core reserve funds to execute that transfer. As a reminder, once that transfer is executed on June 30th, it will be reversed the next day to restore the cash balances to the proper funds. Happy to answer any questions on '25 or the year-end cash transfer.
Regent Ramos.
Yeah, John, could you just remind us, though? I mean, the cumulative number goes back over a decade, right? So that reference point is not on that chart.
Correct. I believe the first years we saw the investments made that led to the deficit were in 2012.
So just for clarity, 2012 to present. Thank you.
Other comments? Questions? Okay, Regent Dickinson? Or sorry, Regent Ramos?
So I move that the Board of Regents approve the transfers necessary at fiscal year 2025 year-end to cover the deficit balance.
Their second? Thank you, Regent Powell, Regent Serna. Okay, any other discussion or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Okay. President Cantwell, is there anything else you might want to add before I wrap up our meeting?
Yeah, I think just informationally, I want to remind everyone, I think this has probably been transmitted, but not in a, in a clear way. And Leslie, you'll have to help me get the numbers. But in 2015, we completed an economic development kind of study for the impact of the university. We are redoing that at the moment. When, and I don't know what that is slated to be finished, but it'll be finished relatively soon. Same company is doing it. You know, there's enormous differences between 2015 and now. But that will become part of the strategic thinking for all of what you've heard about today, both budget and budget strategy going forward, strategic planning going forward, athletics going forward. So I just want you to keep an eye open for that study, because I think it's really important that we have a credible economic value assessment and as we go into the, the planning phases for, for, you know, the, the future of the, of the system in each of our locations generally. So I just encourage you to, and Leslie, do you know when that's slated to be done?
Yeah, it's, many of you are probably familiar. It's CAI that is doing it. They did do the one in 2015. They do a lot of work with the State of Washington that informs the legislature. I'm sure Sam is very familiar with them. The work is, the data is being collected now. I think we'll have something preliminary by the time the Regents meet in September, but we won't have a final, final pretty report until October-ish.
And again, all of this is online. So if you've been following our education experience on being ready to take action today, you should have been able to see that the document was being updated. And again, for those that like to print things, I had been carrying around a draft of this so that I could continue to follow where we were at. So that is available online. I am wrapping up our meeting and just wanted to just share that I, I hope that those that have watched this year's worth of board meetings as we wrap up our last board meeting of the academic year, that you have seen a commitment to maintaining fiscal responsibility and a balanced budget, that you've also seen us continue to lead with compassion and a human-centered approach. We know the decisions today are not going to be without very difficult, hard decisions over the next 30 days that impact people. And we, I believe, have really taken time to listen, as Regent Ramos has mentioned multiple times today, and to do our homework, whether that is Regent McDonald showing up in our budget leader's office, or it's been small group meetings to really dive into the details. This has not been done quickly or without a lot of thought. So I want to just also add that it is important that we continue to show up for WSU, to be encouraging future students to enroll and to be giving generously. It will require a culture of innovation and an ability to manage change, which is never easy, but it is essential. This is a crucial moment in WSU's history. And like we often say, we will fight and will continue to fight. So last year, we launched a Here We Go marketing campaign, and this meeting should be a call to action. It's time to move forward. It's time to go. I think there has been comments about mourning, maybe where we've been or what we should have done, and it's time to move on. So we need to be moving together towards the future, which is an incredibly strong foundation that has been set that we will leverage as a springboard for inventing a new way to continue to deliver our land-grant mission. This is my last meeting, and I was honored. And I have felt the privilege of being in community with tremendous leaders. And I really want to thank, in particular, our chancellors that show up, that advocate for their local communities, for executive vice presidents that are in the thick of this and continuing to be visionary leaders and to our new president. This is the moment, and an important one, to pass the gavel to Regent Ramos, who I have full confidence is the right leader at the right time. And so we have had just a really awesome dynamic between this executive committee. Marty, Jen, and I are all not the same. We are very different, and we complement each other really well. And this is the time for Jen to lead. And so it is with appreciation and gratitude that I thank you, Jen, for all of the time that you have invested this last year in helping to get us set up for you to step into this role. And I am anxious and eager to move to the left or to the right and to support your leadership as we head into September's retreat and board meeting. And so with that, I want to thank those that were involved in helping to create such a thoughtful agenda. Tracy Giordoli has been behind the scenes, making sure that we have everything ready. It's been a long meeting, and I hope that you have a great rest of your week and know that, that we are very committed to WSU and to moving forward. So with that, I will just say, go Cougs! The meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.
My thanks.
Go Cougs!
Go Cougs!